Thirty-one P M. I would like to call our work session to order. Mister Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mister Lawson.
Here.
Mister Majors. Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mister Rodriguez.
Present.
And Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will begin our committee business. I just wanted to note that we will have a special legislative session immediately following our work session to take action on Resolution twenty of two thousand and twenty-three, since it is time sensitive. But we will begin this evening with committee business for the administration committee. We have one bill and six resolutions for consideration. Mister Parker, could you please read Bill four of two thousand and twenty-three into the record?
Yes. Bill four dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance ratifying an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture to authorize the City of Harrisburg Bureau of Police to provide traffic control and protection services for the Farm Show Complex and Expose Center.
Thank you. Solicitor Grover, will you be presenting this bill on behalf of the administration?
I believe so. There are representatives of the police bureau here if this council has specific questions.
Okay.
But this is a ratification, which for the public's sake means that it's already a signed agreement. It just still requires a council approval technically. This is a continuation of an ongoing arrangement where we have to provide police services for traffic at the Farm Show Complex. The prior version had expired. This one has a higher anticipated cap of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year and has an automatic renewal. And even the cap isn't a hard cap. It depends on the needs of the facility for police services there. But this is for traffic control services in and out of the Farm Show Complex for major events. Something our police have done, I think, for decades. So it seems like a fairly standard document, but because it's intergovernmental agreement, it does require council's approval.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Carter, would you like to add anything regarding the bill?
Mister Grover, he pretty much summed it up. This is for manpower. This is for the vehicles that we use up there to provide a safe net for people coming into the Farm Show. Mainly the sportsman show, the horse show. There's numerous shows up there, you know, that we do traffic for. As you all know, if you travel that corridor when the Farm Show opens, it's always very crowded. People are crossing the street. So this chair has been in place ever since I got hired here in my thirty-six years.
Okay, thank you. As always, I'd like to just review the terms. You noted that it is subject to renewal. The previous agreement expired. This one, no determination date of June thirtieth twenty twenty-three. Is that accurate?
But with an automatic renewal.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions. I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues to see if they have any questions for either of you. I'll begin with Councilwoman Rawls. Any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Thank you, Chief Carter, for coming tonight to answer any questions we had. I didn't really have any big questions. It was just kind of like clarification with it. Is it like the police officers that do work during this time period? Is it like overtime? Or is it during their regular schedules? Is it just a little bit of both, depending on the hours?
Overtime. Vacation time, basically. They take their vacation to work.
Oh, okay. And when and how are they picked? Is it like a pool? Like if you would like to work it, you can? Or is it like first come, first served basis or?
They have a person who's in charge and they have a pool of officers that volunteer to work.
Okay, I was just wondering. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, and I apologize. I likely should have started at the other end with Councilwoman Rodriguez, our public safety chair. Do you have any questions? I apologize.
Oh, no problem, Madam President. Commissioner, thank you for joining us this evening. I was just curious of what portion from the Farm Show spreading out, how far do we cover after events or during events? Yeah, or like maybe to Hur Street or, because I know it exceeds further than the Farm Show. Or do we just stay within that corridor?
In that corridor, basically from Clay Street down to Elmerton Avenue and back towards Hack Drive that way.
Okay, yep, that was all I was curious about. No further questions. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. I'll stay on this side. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
But just for clarification purposes, are agreements kind of hour per hour? Hour per hour that they get reimbursed or do we just?
It is hourly rates. The officers, I believe they reimburse for the equipment as well because they use police cars. It's actually called a detail, which is the same thing you see downtown Harrisburg. Officers like downtown, there's a group of them that are scheduled, and there's a group on detail on the busier nights, which the bar owners put a fund together to pay for in addition to. So those are not their regular shifts that they're working. This is the same arrangement. And so a details arrangement we've had with the union, so it doesn't actually go into their overtime earnings or into their pension because it's funded by a third party. And that has been in place for a long time for various things that go on.
And then, I guess, just usage point, have you noticed over the years, like the hours they've needed increased or decreased?
Basically, it goes by the number of days that the shows run. So if they need coverage from like six A M. until five P M. or from six A M. to nine P M., then we will cover those hours.
And the police pick their vacation all at once for the year, for the next year. So that's why Commissioner mentioned it's usually their vacations. They know that they're picking the detail so that they can be on there because they can't work their regular shift and then work that shift as well.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been joined by Councilman Majors. I'll give them a few minutes or did you? Okay, I'll give them a few minutes to get caught up. We're just on Bill four. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions regarding this.
Thank you. Councilman Lawson, any questions?
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Carter, for joining us and answering our questions. The only question I have is still, you said you did mention overtime, so the officers able then to receive time and a half based on what the state's paying?
No, this is a flat fee that the state pays. It's sixty-five dollars an hour. It'll be sixty-five dollars an hour. Doesn't come out of the city budget. It comes out of the state budget.
And then are we just with the lack of available officers, are we noticing this becoming a drag on on our coverage needs at all?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Majors, any questions?
No questions. I may have to speak to Solicitor just to make sure there isn't any impact with my current employment given that Pima also does provide support during the Farm Show, but we can speak offline once.
Yeah, and that may be above my pay grade figuring that out.
Right, right. So I checked with you and then I've also checked with the legal counsel with Pima before taking it up. So no other comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill four, council members? Okay, I'd like to move to add Bill four of two thousand and twenty-three to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. Next, we have Resolution eleven, two thousand and twenty-three. I'll ask if you would read these in sequence. That way we can interview all the potential appointees at one time. So that would be Resolution eleven of two thousand and twenty-three, Resolution thirteen of two thousand and twenty-three. I don't believe Ms. Moore is present.
Correct.
Okay, and Resolution fourteen of two thousand and twenty-three, Resolution fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three, and Resolution seventeen of two thousand and twenty-three. You could please read those into the record?
Yes, Resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Mister Clemens N. Anokwubiri to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg. Resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Mister James R. Thompson, A I A, to serve on the Building and Housing Court Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg. Resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Mister Boris Hines to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg. And Resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Mister Daniel C. Lepo to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd ask that if all potential appointees could please join us here. It looks like we're missing one. Okay, good evening, gentlemen. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Just like before we entertain any questions, I wanted to just remind the public of the responsibility of the Building and Housing Board Code of Appeals. So the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg is responsible for hearing appeals from orders in the form of written notices to comply with the Building Code, Mechanical Code, Housing Code, Electrical Code, Plumbing Code, Property Maintenance Code, Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, Fuel Gas Code, Existing Building Code, Uniform Construction Code, Rent Withholding Ordinances and Codified Regulations promulgated under the authority of such enactments issued by the Code's administrator or his or her designee, and to perform such other duties as the mayor or council may assign it. Okay, each of the current members shall serve until a successor is appointed. Therefore, the membership of the board shall consist of five residents of the city, each of whom shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor for a term of three years. And each member shall serve again until a successor is appointed. So just wanted to note that. So thank you all for your interest and some your continued service. So if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself and sharing either why you're interested in being appointed to the board or if you are a previous board member, if you wouldn't mind sharing your experience on the board. If you could take a few minutes? Okay, and please speak into the microphone. There should be a small, in your case, there should be a green light. In both of your instances, gentlemen, there should be a gray button in the middle. It might be a little higher on yours.
It's in the middle, oh.
Okay, there we go. Just please speak very closely into it. There we go. It's on.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Boris Hines. I am a resident of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. A property owner. My interest in serving on the board is to ensure that voices of the community are able to be heard and have a voice on the board as code violations or issues come before the code enforcement officers. I've had extensive work with the code enforcement officers in organizations such as HARP, which is a very historical society.
Okay, thank you very much. Mister Thompson.
Good evening. First, thanks for inviting me to the meeting this evening. I'm Jim Thompson. I'm a local architect and I think that the quality of housing in our community is highly variable and a lot of the, I would like to see an improvement in the building inventory in the city of Harrisburg. And I think that the benefit of having a registered professional on the board is to bring a broad perspective on the broadest range of disciplines, mechanical, electrical, architectural, plumbing to the board, and I look forward to serving the city.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Daniel Lepo. A pleasure to be here. I am a resident of the city, have been since nineteen ninety-three and even before that. Before I went to Connecticut and brought my wife back. I have worked in planning in the city for the better part of twenty years. I was the director of the Building and Housing Department for two and a half years. Under that, of course, at that time was the Codes Bureau. So I was very familiar with what went on and what the purpose of this board is. I do believe that it is important that we have code enforcement very actively working to make sure that there is code compliance to protect our citizens. Conversely, to that, I spent twelve years working in community action, trying to improve, work with agencies to improve the condition of persons who live in poverty. So while I am interested in seeing that we do have code compliance, I'm also interested in making sure that persons have a chance to be able to do what they need to do without government totally on their back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I believe we've been joined by another potential appointee or reappointment. If you wouldn't mind, you can sign in following. We're just in the midst of introductions. Good evening. Thanks for joining us. You haven't missed anything. We were just going over introductions and noting I know that you are being reappointed to the board. So if you just wouldn't mind introducing yourself and sharing a little bit about your board experience.
My name is Clem Anukuberry. I'm a licensed master electrician. I've been living in the city since two thousand and three. And my experience, I was appointed to the board again four years ago, I think. And in that time, I've attended about three codes appeals. Most of them were owners that had some sort of misunderstanding on what requirements that I needed. And in my capacity, I was able to help out explaining to them what the National Electrical Code requires. And also that was something that I found useful for the residents to kind of know. And I think that's about it for right now.
That's fine. Thank you very much. I do see Ms. Anne Montgomery, Codes Administrator, Codes Director. Did you have any input or want to share anything on behalf of the administration regarding the board and their work? Okay, thank you. Thanks. At this time, I will open the floor to my colleagues for questions. I will begin with Councilwoman Rawls. Any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening to you all. I thank you all for coming and willing to be a part and continuing to be a part of the Building and Housing Codes Board. I agree with you. It is very important. And as you pointed out, Mister Anuka Berry, thank you. Some residents just aren't up to date or don't understand maybe what requirements there are for them. The only questions I had were, and all of you can answer whether you've been on the board or you would like to be on the board, what is something you would like to change or implement that you think would help increase our buildings within the city and also help redevelop them?
Few things that comes to mind is that in terms of electrical codes, it changes every three years. And in some regards, it's the cost of doing electrical work increases. So and sometimes the residents may not know that the cost is going up and, and this is internationally. It's not even about just nationally, it's internationally. So sometimes it's something that in their application for a home renovation permit that these costs can be explained to them before they take on a project they probably cannot handle.
Thank you. Good answer. Thank you.
As a member of the board, I would like to speed and effectiveness of the board as people that are coming to the board and the communication process overall. And speaking of the things that are necessary so that people can get a jump on them at an earlier time. Oftentimes, with all the various things going on, it seems that there's a delay within the work or within the communication process. So I would like to see that better synchronized.
Thank you.
From my perspective, I see a lot of buildings in the city that are derelict and dilapidated. And I see buildings that have been renovated in the city that have not gone through the normal permitting process. So I think the quality of housing in our city suffers from a a lack of communication with the, in some cases, a remote or out-of-town landlords that own some of these properties. It's very difficult to identify who's really responsible for some of the problem properties in our city. So I'd like to see that communication with the landlords improve over time to be able to put a specific focus onto especially the derelict properties.
Thank you. I completely agree with that. And Mister, I don't want to say Lepo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with my future colleagues. I think communication in order to be able to expand understanding and awareness of the code so that I'm very hopeful that frankly, we as a board do not have to meet all that often because people will be understanding the code and applying it. As far as being able to improve housing, that is not necessarily what I see this board. But you do have Resolution twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-three coming up about doing a master plan in South Harrisburg. That's where a lot can be addressed.
Thank you so much for all of your answers. I appreciate it. That's it for me, President Bauer.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. I'd like to call on Councilman Rodriguez, our public safety chair. Do you have any questions regarding any of the appointees?
No questions. I just really appreciate all of your willingness to serve in this capacity. And as you know, it means a lot to the city. And as Chair of Public Safety, you know, the work that you guys do constitutes whether our families are safe or not, literally. So thank you. And any way we can help out from either the committee or me as an individual as well as, you know, the body of council, I'm pretty sure, would be more than willing to do so. So thank you, gentlemen. I look forward to the great work ahead.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Could just identify any potential areas of conflicts of interest you might have?
I am not aware that I have any conflicts of interest.
In my case, it would be instances where I have business connections, current or former. I would recuse myself in a situation where I had either, I think, even if I don't have a current business relationship in my architectural practice, there could be the appearance of a conflict and I would offer to recuse myself in those situations. And I do run into this situation in the Harrisburg School District where I sit as a board director where sometimes it's just the appearance of a conflict that causes me to recuse myself.
I have no conflicts of interest. I am a homeowner in any event that I had given or the board, and I would recuse myself.
As well as I, I don't have any conflict of interest. I also own a home in the city. And in any situation that might come up. And in any situation that might come up, of course, I will recuse myself in this situation.
Thank you, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions?
Uh, thank you, and thank you all for your willingness to serve. And for those that are looking to do another uh, tour of duty on uh, the board, we appreciate that as well. Uh, I know we mentioned that the board hasn't had to meet very frequently. We'll just go over that again. I know, I think, one of the gentleman mentions, you've been on the board about three times. So over the last uh, or those that are currently serving on the board, uh, just how many times did you have to meet during your previous uh, term of service?
I think I've been on the board for four years now, which is in terms of that. And um, it's, it's a privilege to always be part of this city. And in any capacity that I could serve, that's, I'm willing to do that.
Okay, um, the, yes, the next question. I know one of the things that we mentioned was, I know all the codes change on a frequent basis. How do we educate those residents, right? I know we don't necessarily have all of the codes up on the city website. Is there a way that uh, maybe working with the city, we can get all the, all the different codes that they have to? Not the city codes, but also the, some of the Uniform Construction Code standards so that they're easily accessible? Or uh, do we link to, could we link to them on our site, I guess, for Ann or with the Housing Board of Appeals? Is that something that, uh, you know, you all can link to if you have a resource so that residents are aware of what those uh, where those changes need to be made?
I believe with those changes, it really would be the Codes Administrator who would handle that and coordinate with your IT persons to see that the code changes were put on uh, the city website.
Yeah.
So that they can read that. And if anything, it could be, i- if necessary, between the Codes Administrator and the Law Bureau of writing a, a general summary in, in, in everyday language for persons to understand what, what the changes are.
Okay, alright. No further questions at this time. Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
I don't have any further questions. The one that I asked was, or one that I had was already asked. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Lawson, any questions?
Thank you very much. Just one uh, question that, that I have. And I think Mr. Leppo may have alluded to this at, at some way. How do you find a balance between um, enforcement and, and it sounds like you are also looking at grace for some residents who may not be able to um, meet the code per letter. How, how do you find a balance there?
I, I think it's exactly what this board is about. Where um, we meet, the Codes Administrator um, will explain what the situation is. We will hear from the person who's appealing. And then I believe it's for this board to decide what would be the, the right prosecution of, of, of that regulation. Um, and whether it applies. And again, I say that in the sense that I, I'm really talking about those who are residents uh, who own their home and are trying to do something um, and we need to pay attention to those coming in from out of town and how they're handling things. But I think we also need to be able to talk with anyone who may be bringing resources in uh, and finding out exactly uh, what it is that, that they're trying to do and what their situation is. That's my thought.
Thank you. Would anyone else have input on, on something like this? Or leave that just with Mr. Leppo?
From my perspective, the uh, city has a vested interest in having people come in to develop housing in the community. We have a shortage of housing. And we certainly have a shortage of affordable housing in the city. Uh, but I think that the uh, the development of our housing can't be done at the sacrifice of the safety and health of the uh, residents that will live in the housing. So uh, I think one of the responsibilities of the board is to uh, scrutinize the appeal to determine whether the um, uh, if a developer or a resident is looking for relief from a requirement of the city, whether uh, that it impacts the health and safety of the uh, future residents of that housing or whether the housing can be maintained in a sustainable way over time so that it doesn't fall into um, fall into a deteriorated condition. But I think that's a, an important aspect of the appeal. It's a lot of times, uh, we want to give relief just because we'd like to see something get done. But it can't be at the uh, expense of our future residents in that location.
I would like to add, as we was talking about affordable housing, that I believe that it's be a part of our mission to support homeowners and those who are uh, having issues. Oftentimes, there are violations. It's not because people are trying to violate. They may not know the right places to go. That we, as in the Board of Appeals, should also be a source of information. To help them to get up the codes, have them understand that we're here to help them, not to bar them from their homes or cause them further uh, expenses, undue expenses, safety being the priority.
Uh, I think in my case, it's more like um, there are certain national electrical codes. Uh, but there are exceptions uh, that are embedded in those situations. And being that Pennsylvania is an older state and how, some of these houses uh, were built in the nineteen fifteen's. And some of those exceptions may apply. And sometimes um, it would be something that, you know, if the um, the homeowners knows about making sure that there are certain exceptions that applicable to them without compromising the safety of the tenants or the occupants of the building, then I think that the balance can be found in making sure that the code offices know that there are some exception, exceptions. If they are not up to um, informations that are in the National Electrical Code that I will be willing to share with them if they want to know about those.
Thank you. That answered my question um, completely. I wanted to make sure that we've had ways that we can help people without sacrificing their safety. So thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Are there any other additional questions or comments this time? Okay, hearing none. Since we didn't have the opportunity to hear from Ms. Moore this evening, that would have been a discussion of Resolution thirteen of two thousand and twenty-three. I would like to invite Ms. Moore to our next work session on March twenty-first, just so we have an opportunity to interview her. And then I would like to move to add Resolution eleven of two thousand and twenty-three, Resolution fourteen of two thousand and twenty-three, Resolution fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three, and Resolution seventeen of two thousand and twenty-three to our March twenty-eighth legislative session agenda. That way everyone can be appointed at the same time. But thank you all for your willingness to serve, one, and two, for being here this evening to answer our questions. So thank you and hope you enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your services.
Thank you. We will now move to Resolution nineteen of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Mr. Doran Jordan to serve on the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. I believe Mr. Jordan is present this evening. If you wouldn't mind joining us, answer a few questions. Thank you. Before we begin questioning, I would just like to remind everyone of the role of the Harrisburg Planning Commission. The commission shall be comprised of seven members to be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of city council. The term of each member shall be four years or until a qualified successor is appointed. All members of the planning commission shall be residents of the city of Harrisburg. And at least five members of the commission shall be citizen members and shall not be officers or employees of the city of Harrisburg. Okay. Oh, it's also important to note that Mr. Jordan is being appointed to serve in the vacancy formally held by Mr. Zachary Monier. So just, there was one vacancy. Um, and the other board members' um, terms have expired some several years, but there was a vacancy. So I just wanted to note that. Um, so welcome, if you please, if you wouldn't mind, uh, please introducing yourself and just sharing your interest regarding the planning commission.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight, uh, council members. Uh, my name is Doron Jordan. I'm a resident of Harrisburg. I've been here since two thousand and fourteen. Uh, my interest in the planning commission is uh, simply, I want to take a more involved, involved role in the city as a public servant. I want to help facilitate the growth and development of Harrisburg and make sure it uh, which is a full potential and is a place that everyone um, as far as my background is concerned, um, in my current job, I am a planning project manager with um, specialty in public transportation. Um, prior to that, I worked at Capital Area Transit, the local transit agency, for six years as a transit planner. And my degree is in public policy with a concentration in planning and economic development.
Thank you very much. I don't really have any questions. I think you are um, a prime appointee for the planning commission, uh, given your background. Um, so I will open the floor to questions from my colleagues. This time, I will begin with Councilman Rodriguez. Do you have any questions for Mr. Jordan?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you first and foremost, Mr. Jordan. I believe, uh, seeing you again. So thank you for your persistence and being consistent with your goals. Um, what, what are your strengths you feel you can bring um, to the Harrisburg Planning Commission?
Well, um, one thing about me, I'm very detail oriented and I have a strong belief in little things that up to big things. So I think that it's very important to start with the low hanging fruit and the little things that can improve quality of life and especially safety in the city. Um, it can be things as simple as I've noticed that a lot of the streets throughout the city, the center line paint that's fading or was non-existent. And when the paint is there, it's non-reflective, which is at night and especially in heavy rains. So small things like that, um, just in who's safety and quality of life, I think are very important.
Thank you for that. And um, just in being completely transparent, what do you feel is one major thing that you feel you can accomplish, whether good or bad, um, joining the board?
Um, I think, I think one thing I definitely would like to concentrate on is kind of, kind of a big elephant, but I think you always start um, with one bite at a time. Um, I'd like to do whatever is possible to help move along the comp plan. I know it's been passed and it's been kind of languishing. So once again, um, you know, just the low hanging fruit and reviewing the plan with the fellow commissioners and seeing, you know, where could we start to, you know, chip away at it and start to move things forward. I think it's, it's very important for the um, public to see tangible results. And um, even if it's something small, I think it just shows that progress is being made. You know, it's eye and a support that can be pushed for when it's like the bigger, perhaps more difficult.
Great, uh, great point. Any, any articles specific in the comp plan um, that you want to work on direct? It's pretty robust. Anything specific?
Um, I, I think sticking with what I was saying earlier, just pedestrian and road infrastructure, um, safety improvements, sidewalk repair, maintenance installation, curb cuts, um, and um, curves accordingly, like for um, fire hydrants, for bus stops, for handicap spots, um, putting in parking triangles for line of sight issues at intersections. The parking's an issue, and they tend to park right up to intersection and it creates issues.
Yeah.
Out to intersection, little things like that, I think are tangible.
That's a great point. Engineers have been doing a good job of making sure those triangles have been on a different corner. So uh, that definitely major props to them. But um, thank you for your answers and your willingness to serve. Um, no further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan, if you could, when you're speaking, speak closer to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. You're sharing some good information, so we want to make sure that those viewing can hear you.
Gotcha.
Uh, Councilwoman Daniels, are there any questions?
I'm just saying, as the previous um, uh, nominees. Um, what are potential conflicts of interest that you see between what you're currently doing, your position on this board?
Um, the only conflict of interest I could possibly see is if perhaps my current employer, that is an engineering firm, was to do any work with the city. Obviously, in that case, I would need to recuse myself from any type of vote or approval that um, would come up pertaining to that.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions?
Thank you, and uh, thank you, Mr. Jordan, for your willingness to serve. Uh, no questions, but I, I, this is a testament to folks that have sought to be a part of Harrisburg and want to continue and serve in another role. So these roles are very necessary to move the city forward. So we're glad that we're being able to have you serve hopefully on our uh, planning commission. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you very much, President Bowers. Uh, I don't have any questions. Uh, I will say that I am excited and um, very much appreciative of your willingness to serve uh, in this capacity. I also sit on the planning commission. And I will say, I did discuss the potential of you joining the commission with uh, some of the commissioners at our meeting last week. And everyone's excited to have you, uh, if you would join us, um, and excited for your background because I think it brings a different perspective uh, to the commission because no one on the commission right now has that background. So I think you would be a great addition to the board, and I look forward to serving with you.
Thank you. Councilman Lawson, any questions?
No questions, just a uh, a statement. Um, I sat with this young man in the lobby. And when I met him, I said, "The future of Harrisburg is bright. Regardless of, of what he decides to do, you're a great representation of the best and brightest that we have in this city. So we are honored to have you come on and serve. And we're really excited to see what the future is going to hold for you. So keep coming, keep putting your, yourself out there because uh, you make the rest of us proud."
Thank you. Very kind.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Thank you, and thank you for being here, Mr. Jordan. And I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I'm going to say it anyway. But I definitely thank you for your willingness to serve. You are truly a man of your word. Um, you said that uh, you want to be a part of Harrisburg, give back to it, that you want to be a public servant to Harrisburg, and you have proven that. Maybe one door closed, but you went right to the next one to make sure that you had a seat at the table of trying to make Harrisburg the best place that it can be. And with your credentials and um, your experience, um, you will truly be able to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other additional questions for Mr. Jordan? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I would like to move to add Resolution nineteen of two thousand and twenty-three to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. Thank you again for being here this evening and hopefully we'll see you soon. Take care. This concludes the work of the Administration Committee. We will now move to the Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to Vice President Green, our Budget and Finance Committee Chair.
Thank you very much, President Bowers. Uh, the first uh, thing that we're going to be reviewing in the Budget and Finance Committee is Bill Five of two thousand and twenty-three, which is an ordinance appropriating American Rescue Plan Act funding from the United States Department of Treasury and authorizing certain expenditures of such funds. Um, whoever is here from the city to, or from the administration, excuse me, in order to present in front of, on this, if they could come up now. In the meantime, I will just kind of give a little bit of an overview of the timeline that I'm thinking about for Bill Five. It will not be on the next legislative session. The prod, the process in my mind is for us to get an overview tonight, be able to ask some of those initiating questions as well as receive more information from the administration on it. To hold two to three public meetings so that the public can evaluate this and then come back if there are any changes that would need to be made, we would look to make those. If there will be a need for another public session, we would have that. So looking at least two months in my mind before this would be on a legislative agenda. But you know, things could move faster or slower, but we just want to make sure we get the process right.
Good evening, council. Dave Baker, we're going to start, we have four presentations and related related to the ARPA funds tonight. We have Dave Baker to discuss those related to parks and recreation. After that, we'll be Anne Montgomery to discuss issues related to codes, Denise Hill related to affordable housing. And then finally, Chief Brian Enterline to discuss Fire Bureau related ARPA funds. So we'll start with Mr. Baker and I am here to click along.
Good evening, council. David Baker, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. Guess we can get started. All right. So we are requesting an eight million dollar ask for the American Rescue Plan funds. And part of that, we would like to put towards the the much aging hall manner pools. So as you can see, eight million dollars requesting for this pool. We have slides here that are showing you the decay of the pool. You can see there the curb, we have sinks, we have dilapidated roofing. We've actually had one of the roofs cave in at one of our pools. And we are currently in the process of fixing that. Here we have shower structures, winterization process over on the right. So you see some things on the ground there, but just the state of decay for the entire pool is pretty excessive. Again, here's more curbing. We have issues with expansion joints, water leakage. There's, you name it, a lot of tripping hazards and other things. Uh, here are some options for spray parks. You know, we have lots, lots and lots of ability to have all different walks of life enjoy something such as this. By no means is this the only options that we have, but you know, there's just some pictures to show and some statistics or some numbers that we've gathered that explain the amounts of kids that would utilize something along, along these lines here. Uh, here's an option. I mean, just again, this is not something that we necessarily will have, but it is definitely possible with those funds is to do something uh, like a lazy river that encapsulates the spray park itself, just so all different age groups could enjoy it as well. Uh, again, you know, you see more options there in spray parks and we want, uh, we want all different walks of life to be able to enjoy these things. So lots of visual aids here and you guys can see. You know, we have tunnels, different age groups, you name it. So then here's more slides. Guys can see everything on here. Uh, some of this stuff we want to show that different accessibility levels are all welcome at these types of parks. So no matter what your ability is, you should be able to utilize different aspects of this type of play area. Again, here's more options and you can see there are many, many different types of ADA accessible play areas. Uh, some of this is, we're starting to get into interactive play. And uh, this will show you how no matter what, uh, what's going on, um, you know, what's your, you're working with in life that you can enjoy and should enjoy the city parks. Um, a lot of this we're seeing now are like reactive play. So everything you do, uh, kind of in action creates a reaction. So that, that stimulates in different ways. Um, again, this is music play. Uh, there are many different types and we go into this for hours, all the different types of music play there are for kids, but it does stimulate different parts of the brain and different, you know, different kids enjoy it. Again, more music play and you can see the numbers over there on the left. But it is, it is showing to be very beneficial to have for children nowadays. Some of this is incorporated into our proposed plans for the spray park itself. Uh, we're going to try and put in a few large community centers in the spray park and then also a small business incubator for hopefully at least two different food vendors that we can bring them in, you know, local vendors and they can both serve the public there and also maybe get their name out and start growing their businesses as well. Uh, this is going over to the tree removal side. So last year, the city spent a little over $300,000 taking down trees with both low income and seniors. This includes corridor pruning and line of sight pruning. And as we know, that money went quickly and there was much more needed. So this is again what we're asking for in regards to the American Rescue Plan. And that concludes the slideshow.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Um, I'll open it to my colleagues here in a second. I do have a couple of questions. The first thing that I'll start with, and maybe I missed it somewhere in here, but the 1.5 million for ADA accessible playground equipment that was in the original proposal, the original, original ask, uh, letter to the city council from the mayor, I don't see that in this budget of Bill Five. Is it missing?
Yeah, it should be in there. There should be eight million for the spray park, 1.5 for the ADA accessible playground and 500,000 for the tree assistance.
Okay. I do not see the 1.5 million in here for the accessible playgrounds. Is it something that just may have been missed or was it removed? Does anyone know? Or is it just something that looks like it was missed? So would need to be added in? And the numbers recalculated?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Um, that's something we'll follow up on. Doesn't have to be answered tonight. So we'll follow up on that to see. Um, as far as the spray park for South Harrisburg, what would be a timeline for completion and encumbrances of these funds, knowing that that they do have to be spent in a certain amount of time. And I don't even know if we've done like, I, I don't believe we've done even like a design phase.
Correct. So we, well, we have started a rough preliminary design. But it, it would be responsible for me to give you like a rough timeline just because of supply and demand issues, contractors, our processes here internally. Really, I think the, the entire process will be framed around what the parameters of the, the funds are. So if they have to be encumbered within a certain period of time, you know, we make sure we push as hard as possible to get that done within that time period.
Under the US Treasury regulations as of right now, all funds must be encumbered no later than December 31st, 2024. All funds must be expended no later than December 31st, 2026. So there is a timeframe the federal government has put upon everybody. So which doesn't really address the supply chain. It's just the timeline we have.
Thank you. And I guess I just want to make sure with such a, a big project, making sure that it can be completed or spent in enough time uh, so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we're not done and the money should have been spent.
Yeah. I mean, again, I, I don't want to mislead anyone here, but if, if everything works as we would hope, I believe that we can be successful with the completion of the project.
Okay. Um, have we thought about like the access routes? I know when this was originally, uh, the plan was originally put out there, I was contacted by some residents uh, who live on the street that goes to the, uh, to the pool. And um, they had some concerns that with such a big facility, it will be increased traffic and were there other access routes planned for people to get down there and then also parking in the area?
Yes. So we, we have definitely looked into that. Um, that would be something that would be part of the funding as far as traffic studies go, we would look into professionally. But unprofessionally, uh, from a layman's point, we have looked into different routes, multiple entrances in and out. Uh, that's one of the complaints I've heard about that facility itself is people don't like the fact that there's only one way in and one way out. So we are addressing that and I think once we get the funding, we can do it professionally, make sure that it's a hundred percent correct, but it is something that's in our, our periphery right now or looking into it.
Okay. And then my last question before I open up to my colleagues, where did the number come from? Where'd we get eight million?
Um, so internally, we looked at projects we've done in the past. We tried to calculate for as much inflation as we thought was necessary. And then we, we just kind of did the rough ideas of what, what pieces of equipment, motors, facilities, structure, earthwork, all that. We broke it down and then went off of those numbers and came up with this one.
Okay. The only question I have at this moment, I'm going to start to my right here with Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green, and good evening, Director Baker. Thank you for being here tonight to answer our questions. My one question was, I didn't see it up there, but I could have missed it. Will there be some sort of pool that would be here? Not just, I know that we spoke about the spray park, but will there be a pool there where kids can still learn how to swim?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And how deep would it be at either end? Projectively.
Again, since we haven't had a professional drawing of this, you know, we don't have anything in concrete yet, but um, I would, I would recommend that we do a pull around four feet deep. Uh, that way it's not so deep that we'd have to worry about any unnecessary, you know, risks for kids, but it is deep enough where if you would like to swim across that pool, you can easily do so. You're not going to be hitting the bottom. You can't dive in there, uh, but you can completely learn how to swim. Uh, you can play, play in the pool because there's jungle gym structures, uh, there's basketball, uh, there's all different types of games you can do in a pool, but you don't typically do them in a, in a very deep pool. So a, a 12 or 18 foot deep pool, such as what we have now, those are things of the past. No one puts those in anymore. Um, so it would definitely be more shallow, but it would be deep enough to swim in.
Okay, thank you. I had another question, but it just went past me. Um, I'm sorry, but you did speak about the vendors, almost like an incubator for businesses. So, um, so that was great. I thought that was really interesting. I know that's something we had spoke about before. But the pool was a very interesting part for me because I want to, I think we all want to make sure kids are still learning how to swim uh, within the city. So thank you. If I, if I think about what it was, it went past. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Lawson.
Thank you very much. I, I don't have any questions. I want to thank you for coming in and presenting this information for me. I had a question on the budget, but she's, uh, it's been asked and answered. And I also want to commend you for the business incubator because that's something near and dear to my heart. So thank you very much.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have many conversations about this, but I just wanted to go back to the spray park. Is there a definition of a spray park that you're operating under? I know Councilwoman Ross mentioned, will there be a pool? But what is the definition of a spray park?
So if you have a splash pad, it's a small version. Um, so like a reservoir park, we're proposing to put in like a spray alley. So a, a spray pad or a splash pad. That's a small version of, well, yeah, of a spray park. Um, so a spray park is something that's much larger scale from the definition that I've been told in the past. So it's just that the size is, is why we call it one compared to the other.
Okay. And just a quick search of a spray park, the definition I found was a zero depth child's play area where water is sprayed from upright structures or ground sprays and then drained before it can accumulate. So that's, I guess, what you're operating off of with the photos that we've seen.
Right. And that's, so a spray park is exactly what you're saying there, but that's what a splash pad is as well. And that is a much smaller version of that same mechanical type of play.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify so everyone knew in the event that people weren't aware what it, what it is. Um.
Think of it like a, a, almost like a theme park, like a modern day amusement park, just on a smaller scale. But that's what we're hoping for at least.
Okay. Okay. I don't think I have any other additional questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors.
Thank you. Uh, with respect to the ADA accessible players, we're looking to do those across the city or is we're looking at one specific area?
So with this funding in particular, we're looking to do a completely inclusive player, 100% like every, every piece of structure out there should be 100% ADA accessible. With all city parks, we want to make sure that there's at least one aspect of that play structure that is ADA accessible. So like chutes and ladders, we made sure that was ADA accessible just because we don't have a whole lot of other structures out there. So I'm hoping I'm not confusing anyone here. Yes, we want to make sure every place or every park is ADA accessible, absolutely. Uh, but in regards to this particular funding, we want every piece to be completely ADA accessible without, without a doubt.
Okay. And then do you have a location in mind?
So I don't believe we've actually gone over the, the ideal location. Uh, if we do receive funding for this, then we would probably work this in with our, our overarching parks plan to see where we would get the most beneficial location for that particular park.
Okay. And just real back, going back to the spray park, though you're mentioning the costs that you were, you know, starting to estimate based upon some of the work that has been done in-house. So are those numbers based upon, you know, trying to understand what, what we could base those numbers upon, because you know, we know the cost of construction materials have been increasing. So that was a number as of uh, 2022. Okay.
All right. Yeah. And, and obviously everything has gone up exponentially. Our numbers will not be accurate anymore. We will have to scale back slightly. Um, but we did estimate for a decent amount of inflation because we knew it wasn't happening right away. So where we'll be on that spectrum, I can't tell you exactly, but it's not going to be a small little, you know, it won't be a spray pad. Uh, it won't be a spray alley. It, it'll be large.
Okay.
Uh, but it's, it might not be as grandiose as what we were originally envisioning, but it will be.
And then, okay. And then in terms of like the design plan review, all that's being done in-house or is, are we going to be contracting what a, what it looks like? I know you're basing, you know, you have to come up with a, an estimate and do some initial internal work, but we would be bidding out the work for this, right? So I'm just.
We would have to do, we'd have to bid out, we have to do Davis Bacon, we have to do all kinds of stuff to comply with the federal requirements. So and, and while we're not, I'm not certain of this, um, I'm not sure it can be a design build under their state or federal law. Um, so.
So we have to bid out each piece, more than likely, design.
Design and, and because it's construction, there, there made the provision using bidding separately for different provisions of it. Like if there's a, if we have to do heating and HVAC related to it, it's got to be bid separately. So it would all go out together at the same times.
Okay. And so that's what I'm trying to make sure of. All of that's contemplated into that eight million dollar number.
Correct.
Okay.
So we, we've done some preliminary design work on this just to see if it's feasible and what the public would like. And we've done that in-house where we, we've asked, we've gone out and we've done surveys and, and just to get information from people. And that is the, the preliminary, but we do uh, expect to do additional work and we'll be outsourced.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Chair Gray.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
What year was the plan developed?
Uh, so we started working on this in 22, 2022.
And what's the inflation rate that you used?
You're asking me a year ago. Um, I, I think we went for, I would have to actually go back and look at the paperwork that we have, but I'm thinking it was between like 10 and 15%.
For one year or for?
For the, we, we, we projected one year in the future. So we did not go, you know, we don't have like a, a scale of year after year. Um, we just assumed this would be within a one-year period that we would get a, a yes or no answer on whether we were able to move forward on this.
And then what have been, what are the plans for like the maintenance, once this, these projects are built?
So currently we budget to maintain both pools. Um, it, it costs us and, and the budget, it's all in one, um, but let's just say rough numbers through hand. and, and the budget, it's all in one, um, but let's just say rough numbers through hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the pool maintenance and the pool staff, uh, chemicals, upkeep, expansion joints, concrete repair, uh, chlorine, all that good stuff. Um, so we will just continue to budget for the same amount or similar amount for this pool. Uh, obviously we have to sit down with the administration and council to go over pricing structures for what we would request the public to pay to get into the new aquatic facility. And then hopefully those numbers would reflect something that would make this as a self-sustaining, um, project. So we wouldn't have any additional cost. If anything, we'd reduce our maintenance costs over the years.
Just from the photos you guys showed before, it seemed to me that the, these facilities would require more, more maintenance in terms of labor and kind of repairing parts and things like that. So I'd like to see that those numbers a little bit spelled out a little bit more for us. Um, and then on the incubator side, what are the costs related to the incubator? Because right now both of our pools theoretically have the ability to have vendors in them. So what's the, like, yeah, what's the, if, if we have, if we'll have the capacity in a year or two, like, why don't we have the capacity now? And what's that cost going to be?
So i- i- as far as the cost go, um, you know, I didn't, I didn't break down the, the fencing per se for the, uh, the food trucks themselves. But, um, currently our pools probably wouldn't be conducive to having vehicles and children right next to each other. Uh, with these design or with this design, it would allow the, uh, small businesses of the food trucks to pull into the space, uh, free of any, any children, any footpath, because there'd be two sets of gates. Um, they pull into that space. Once they were set up, they could open the internal gate for the, um, for the kids, like a four-foot high gate. And then the kids would be able to have access in and out of there. Once they're done, at the end of the day, everyone's out, they close that gate up, and then they can open up the external gate to get back out to the street. That would keep the kids safe. And it would let the food trucks come and go, um, you know, safely and have the kids be able to get right up to them.
Okay. So the ven- so the vendors you're thinking of would be, it'd be more food trucks than, I think, because right now we have kitchens and then that, the, the people could use, like, and that vendors could use. So, so it doesn't be like an internal. We would be removing what we have now, which is that kitchen and the bathrooms and all of that. Well, I guess bathrooms would still be there.
I, I would, I would respectfully suggest we're kind of ahead of ourselves because we don't have the design. We have a concept. And when we get to the design, uh, that's where I think engineers weigh in and what we can and can't do. I mean, so the specifics is, is going to be simply limited at this moment to see if you fund it. I mean, that, I mean, that's just a simple reality. So many of the plans that we do, until you see the design, what is feasible, you don't know whether you can do what you want to do. I mean, that's been the city's experience, project after project. So where things will go, how it will be situated because of where lines lay right now for sewer, water, I mean, other things, hydrants. Those all are engineering utility decisions that have to be made for electrical that has to reach the spot. So we, we're just not going to have a realistic idea here. We can talk conceptually about it. But what we won't know till, till, if this gets funded, then we have to put it out for professionals to really say what's possible with the finances that we have, the money we have, uh, and the concept we have.
So then of the eight point five million, how much goes to this, to the incubator project?
Um, so we're requesting, we're requesting eight million dollars for the pool for the, the entire project itself. Um, the, the small business incubator, we, we didn't break that down. We just, we're estimating that whenever we did like fencing costs and, uh, earth moving costs, um, macadam costs, um, is, you know, so we, we broke it down more into how the construction places would go. Not so much what, what portion of the project would go towards like the, we, we didn't do just the, the party room or the, um, the community room. You know, we didn't break down just the cost for that. It was more of the phase of, of building the internals for that, you know, plumbing, electrical, um, foundation, walls. That's, that's how we, we broke those costs down.
And then it sounds from, and I guess this goes to your point, but I'll still reference it. It sounds like from the planning of this process, there is division that we will be charging folks to use our facilities to make sure that our maintenance is manageable. I mean, is, is, or, or is that, is that an aspiration or is that just what might happen if we don't have the money?
Yeah. I mean, we, we'd use this the same as all the other park, um, park areas, you know, we, we charge like a rental fee for the parks and just like how we're using the pools now, we charge people to get into the pools or get into the aquatic facility itself. So, yes.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Chair Green. Um, thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening, explaining this to us. Um, Director Baker, I wanted to ask, uh, will there be any like community town halls as we get closer for the South Side? Just for, you know, the opportunity for families in the area to give, to voice their opinions?
Absolutely.
I think that'd be really important because even considering a multipurpose use for the facility this way, year-round it has a purpose in the winter as well as with the spring park in the summer or spring. I'm not sure if a conversion for ice skating or a conversion for, you know, anything else is suitable, but, um, just keeping our community, our youth busy at all times is the most important part. Uh, and when there's comments like it's not what we originally planned, but it's something, you know, I think we owe the residents a bit more in that, uh, perspective. So just kind of try to keep that in mind. And then also, um, are there any surveys, uh, traffic, you know, of studies, anything besides that won't, the eight million won't encompass anything additional? Or I know, uh, Councilman Majors asked the question, but it's just the one point five for ADA compliance after the eight million. Just wanted to see if there's anything else outside that box of the eight million that we would additionally have to pay for.
So just, just to clarify on there, we're asking for five hundred thousand for the tree assistance, one point five for the ADA playground. That's a ADA playground by itself. And then the eight million for the aquatic facility or the spray park. Right. Three different projects. So they're completely separate of each other.
Outside of that, you would need different surveys and different studies to even make those projects, uh, happen, correct Neil or am I?
No, the funding for the projects, that's all calculated.
That's all encompassed in it. Okay, okay. Um, I think you had mentioned motors. You said some of the constituted costs would be motors. I know we do have a problem with the South Side pool motor now.
Yes.
If that's getting ripped out, that wouldn't be a part of the needs, correct?
One of the largest costs of a spray park are the electric motors involved to, to pump everything right there. Um, so there's, there's a decent amount of motors. Uh, they're smaller than your typical pool motor. Uh, you know, our, our pool motor, seven thousand dollars to get a new pool motor. That's not including any sort of labor to tear it out or put it back in.
That's a pretty big one, yeah.
They're monster motors. Um, this would have smaller motors. It would be more manageable for internal staff to do it. With our current pool motors, we have the skills and, and the equipment to do it or the tools to do it. But we don't have the equipment to actually lift.
Okay.
Uh, you know, a three hundred pound motor out of a, a, a store and a half pit.
Right.
And then put a new one back in its place. With, uh, something like a spray park, it would give us more of the ability to do those internals ourselves.
Right. And then, um, updating those pumps would probably make everything run a bit more efficient and correct?
Yeah. All, all the pumps would, would most likely run off of VFDs, uh, so you'd actually be able to, uh, turn up and down the, the motor speeds, um, which would give you the most efficiency out of the electricity that you're using. Um, and you'd also have the least amount of water consumption, uh, now that we are paying for our water. You know, it is something that we're mindful of because we use, and we, large amount every year in the pool.
Absolutely. And I know, um, to, to the solicitor's point, uh, engineering would probably come a bit further down the road. But was there any discussion about draining concerns, drainage, um, issues with the South Side being, you know, Sincole area? Um, unfortunately with the issue we had a few years back, any concerns for that or is it too early to really speak about that?
We always have concerns about Sincles. We, we definitely do, uh, but that is definitely going to be, uh, an engineer's question. They're going to have to do research for us.
Right. And we, and I think we really just don't know the answer to that. The last time something was pu- put in up there was long before we had the Sincle problem. So there's going to have to be testing done.
Okay.
And that testing will give us answers. So.
Awesome. Thank you. No further questions.
And I just want to apologize. It is an editing error on my part. If you see the total number, you'll notice it's one point five million in the list, um, because we, we literally just, when we were editing, struck out a number and didn't realize it for the ADA stuff. So it was in there. We just, in transposing it, lost it. So.
Okay.
But we kept the money. So.
Uh, Councilwoman Ross, did you have any more questions?
Yes, my brain unfold and I remembered them. So, um, my two additional questions, one was about the pool and one's about the tree. So the one about the pool was, I know we have the public meetings that, um, Vice President Green spoke about. I know right now we don't have concrete plans because we need to get things approved. But is there any way for the public that it's a little bit more concrete for them on what, um, the spray park or the splash pad and the ADA accessibility with the playground, things like that may look like, just so they are able to gather it within their thoughts?
So what I typically like to do is, once we get a design consultant under contract, they'll give us rough ideas, like a conceptual plan or multiple conceptual plans. And really the only thing that is going to inhibit us getting copious amounts of public input are, are the timelines put around the money. So how fast we have to get that money in convert? Um, so if we have enough time, we will go out, you know, and, and just get as much info as possible. Because that's, that's what we want to do. We want to put what, what the people that live there want. That's what we want to put in there. Uh, but obviously if we have a very quick turnaround time, we have to compress that and try and get as much info as we can as fast as possible.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know for that. Um, for the trees, um, I know you're asking for five hundred thousand dollars. We, we know trees are a big issue here in the city. And I know with the ARPA money, I think we could all agree to say we want to make sure that things, the, the way the money is spent is spent on things that can be lasting. Um, is there any way with that money we could somehow, because I know years ago we did, we implemented our own almost tree company that took down trees within the city. Is there any way that money could be able to implement our own tree service so we don't have to keep contracting out? And we have people who actually know our trees and knows our cities and knows our community?
No.
Okay. So it would just be five hundred thousand dollars just for that?
Right.
Portion and go away and then we have trouble again?
We, we are of a statutory prohibition against competing events, private sector. So it is either our employees or it is a company, but we can't be both the employees and the company.
Well, I guess I mean, can our employees be the company? That's what I'm trying to say. Like our parks and rec, yeah, can't we have our parks and rec, um, be the company that take down the trees? That's what I'm saying. Not like.
They could do part of it, but you're going to be on a timeline. They already do full-time work.
Mm-hmm.
You would have to expand the budget for jobs that wouldn't remain. And you'd have to expand the equipment for new people to use it. I mean, so there's a lot that goes into that. And five hundred thousand won't go that far.
Okay.
For that type of analysis. Um, I don't think our Cox guys ever complained that they don't have enough work to do. I don't think we ever hear that from our guys. So.
No, not to say we don't, but.
Right.
I just want to see something that's everlasting, not just something that's for one time, it goes away and then we're back at having trouble with our trees, which we do. It's an issue.
We have many, many.
They, they have their own houses here in the city. So I'm just, you know, trying to see what we can establish. But if we can't, um, that's sad, but we'll have to move on from there.
Neil, can we talk to the, the administration about the additional positions, adding them even if on a temporary basis?
You, you can always do it. We'd have to work it out with the union for a temporary basis. The question becomes the equipment, the additional equipment that's already in use, um, and buying more equipment for people that won't be here to use it. You know, on the other side, I mean, it would be a big chunk of the money. We'd go for that equipment.
I mean, if, if the funding was given for this, we could add additional positions and then council would have to approve additional funding to keep them on in additional years after the funding has been extended. But.
But is that, well, that's what I'm saying, is that an option?
Not with this money. I mean, you, the council and the administration should be making decisions. And you gotta, I mean, there is care you have to take when you have one-time money. Um, when you have one-time money and you make long-term commitments, you create a legacy cost that you may not be able to maintain without, you know, uh, raising taxes or cutting other things.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah. But sometimes you can establish things that can start paying on themselves, but.
Sure.
I, I know. But that's what I'm saying. I don't, you're saying, but I get what you're saying. You're saying, no, we can't do that.
Yeah. When you, when I, I understood what you mean. Can we, can we do our, can we do it as our, uh, like a tree comp, a tree company that can go out and do it? That we can't do.
Right.
You know, but we could, we, if, if the, the administration and the council decide to expand that part of the budget, you know, with the tax revenue that we have, that is certainly an option that's always there. It's just weighing priorities. So.
Okay. That's, that's what our initial thought was, that we would add four additional positions that would temporarily be funded from this money. Uh, we, we did receive funding from council this year to purchase an additional bucket truck for those positions.
Right.
Um, and now if those positions are not continued to be funded, we will absolutely continue to use that just in a smaller capacity. Uh, there, there's, anyone could tell you, there is no shortage or there, there's no excess of vehicles. There's, there's completely a shortage. We share vehicles. It is not efficient. Um, and, and this would do nothing but, you know, help that. Um, it would, it would, I would hope that we could continue to fund them because as everyone knows, the, the trees are a huge issue. Um, they're a huge liability. Uh, it's just, it's, it's not stopping. And so we could be at this for years and it's just going to keep going. So it's, it's a lot of deferred maintenance that we could, we could throw a decent amount of money at, whether it's in-house or it's external. Um, I mean, it's my hope that we can continue funding external for reduced capacity for more of the, um, maybe a little more high-risk trees be removed and then, uh, increase the volume that we can take down internally with more of the basic trees that need to be removed. But we just, we get a lot produced every single year as far as reduction of those dangerous trees.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from my councilmembers? No. Thank you very much for being here tonight, Director Baker. And I, I think we'll move on to the next section.
Yes, uh, we'll, uh, bring up Anne Montgomery, our, uh, Director of the Codes Bureau.
Everybody hear me okay? No. You have to speak directly into it. It's not the, doesn't pick up the best. How about that?
Yes.
So my, uh, presentation is on the demolition of dilapidated and structurally unsound buildings in the city of Harrisburg using the ARPA fund. The code that we follow is the two thousand international property maintenance code. This is the one that the officers use for any citations, notices or, uh, inspections they, they do throughout the city. This book, the main purpose is to protect the public health and safety of the people from the hazards of unsafe buildings. Unsafe structures and equipment. Whenever structure or equipment is found by the code officer to be unsafe or when a structure is found unfit for human occupancy or is found to be open to unauthorized entry or is found unlawful, the structure can be condemned. Shall be condemned, actually is what the code says. A example of an unlawful structure would be an illegal rooming house. The structure was made for a single family and now they're renting out, uh, rooms and the electric was not made for that. Uh, people are using heaters in each room or air conditioners along with microwaves, refrigerators linked separately in each bedroom. Uh, it causes a danger for electrical fires, which then we have the, uh, fire department having to go in there to rescue people. It, it really is unsafe and we're finding them all the time because housing is so expensive and and that's how people are trying to get by. But we still have to condemn the building, uh, because it is so unsafe. When we condemn a building, the notice is sent to the owner, the property is placarded. And if no action is taken by the owner, we then. And if no action is taken by the owner, we then start to write citations. This slide is on the demolition. The code official may cause a structure to be demolished and removed either through an available public agency or by contract or arrangement with private persons. When a property is demolished, uh notice is sent to the owner for the amount that they owe the city. And after thirty days, if they do not pay for that, a lien is placed against that said property. Whenever a property is demolished, permits and demolition work may only be secured and conducted by a city licensed and bonded contractor, which is competent in the field of demolition. The cost, we have an in-house demolition crew. Actually, it's one person, very hard worker, works underneath Public Works. Um so that's an in-house demo that we use or we send the, uh we send quotes out for properties that we need demolished by contractors. Uh it's always less for the in-house demolition crew because we do a lot of the work ourselves on the prep before he even starts the demo. We have to call to make sure the electric's off, make sure the gas is off, we contact UGI and also CRW to turn off the water. Uh they actually, CRW gives us a low rate for that as compared to what a contractor may have to pay. So our in-house demo, if it's connected to another property, um we call that a party wall that joins both properties. And now that that one property is gone, we have now a wall that is exposed to the elements and it's now considered an exterior wall. So we have to bring that wall back to the standards of the current code. And so we stud that out and then put in R-19 insulation. We have to insulate it now because it is an exterior wall. Plywood, house wrap, and then either stucco or vinyl siding. That is not done in-house. That is contracted out, put out for quotes. Um. Grading for condemned structures. We have a grading system from one to number five, one being the worst. Those are the properties that either are collapsing or close to being collapsed. There's a hundred and forty-two of those in the city. The next grading down, number two, is two hundred and ninety-five of those. Number three, we have a hundred and thirty-five. Number four, we have twelve. And grade five, we have fourteen of those. The condemnation and demolition process overview. When a property is condemned and the property stays, the property will stay condemned until the owner brings it into compliance or the property is demolished. Demolitions are performed either in-house by Public Works or a qualified demolition contractor. Our in-house demo, uh he actually works, it's part-time, the work that he does. Because on Wednesdays, it's a very heavy day for Public Works with trash. And so um he assists with that on Wednesdays. And I believe other things may come up for him also where he's pulled because he's needed uh to do jobs there at Public Works. Contractor requirements. When we uh send out quotes, the contractor has to have proof of bonding, insurance, city market tile license, permit application with written plans in the process for the demolition and safety precautions. Experience in demolition in high-density housing and demolition with shared party walls with adjoining properties. Prior to the start of demolition, the contractor must submit dates and proof that all utilities have been terminated and proof of a completed DEP asbestos application. Demolitions must be in compliance with the Harrisburg City Property Maintenance Code. The Codes Department performs inspections during the demolition. We do progressive inspections. There's seven of them. Um all in-house demolition. I believe I did say that, excuse me, the party walls um are sent out. That we do not do party walls are sent out for. So I wrote down what we did for 2022. Sixteen properties were demolished using the twenty-two funding. Eleven of those properties were in-house. Five of those were demolished by demo contractors. The overall approximate average cost using the contractors in-house was forty-two thousand five hundred. But it also took the average cost of just the contractor. Because I believe with the ARPA money, it may be used a lot with the contractor. So the contractor demolitions' approximate average cost was sixty-three thousand. Going from the range of the lowest, it was twenty-five thousand. And the highest was the last bid of last year was for ninety-seven thousand three. The twenty-five thousand was two houses that were together. So it was twenty-five and twenty-five. But there was no party walls. There wasn't really a lot of issues. And that property was already collapsing. Excuse me. Twenty-twenty-three condemned buildings and demolition. The grade one condemned buildings throughout the city that I'm going off of is a hundred and eleven. That's where I picked from on what will the next property be that is to demolish? They're the worst out of a hundred and forty, a hundred and eleven of them are really bad. So we have the city broken down into five regions. We have two code officers for each region. Region one being McClay, starting with McClay and going down Shypope. There's only four condemned properties in that area. Region two is from Seventeenth Street going up to Twenty-Ninth and then all the way over to the Greenbelt, Sycamore Street, past there. There's only five in that area. Region three is north of Market Street from Cameron to the different city lines. So you're talking from Market, Park, Regina, Walnut, State, and on out to McClay. That's twenty-eight of those. Region four, which is the most high-density area, that's south side of the hill. So you go from Market all the way to Paxton from Seventeenth Street down to sixty-two of them. And then there's seventeen in the uptown area, going from McClay up to the city line. Grade one is structurally unsound. The building has collapsed or is in danger of collapsing and poses a threat to life and property. Last year, the general fund was for five hundred thousand and Community Development Block Grant was two hundred thousand. That was the money that was used for those demolitions. ARPA funding is one point five million. Going to go towards the taking down the worst properties. By including this additional funding into the demolition program, we can cut the backlog of condemned properties on the list, ready for demolition and continue to expand the demolition program. Using the twenty-twenty-two average cost per demolition, forty-two thousand five hundred, approximately thirty-five structurally unsound buildings will be demolished with the ARPA funding. If you're using the average cost of a contractor demolition, which was sixty-three thousand, approximately twenty-four structures that are unsound will be demolished with the ARPA funds. And that concludes my slide.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Uh I'm going to open it up to my colleagues first with any questions or comments. I'm going to start to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez.
Um no specific questions pertaining to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Daniels?
Is there anything beyond demolition in the budget in the proposal?
Sorry, what's that again?
Is there anything beyond demolition in the proposal?
I believe it's just for demolition of lighted properties.
The one point five million is for the demolition of properties.
Okay, so what's the affordable housing plan?
That's Denise.
We are getting to that.
Okay, okay, sorry, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, okay, um that's it then.
Councilman Majors?
Uh thank you. So. I guess, let me start from the beginning. One of the questions I do have is, how, how long does, how long does the process normally take to go from citation to ultimately them on a demo list?
It all depends on the property itself and how bad it is. You know, I mean, the process, if we found a property tomorrow that was being used, say illegally, as a rooming house, we would condemn it right away. It would be placarded, notice sent to the owner.
Okay, uh so in this instance, we're looking to spend one point five million uh on the properties, for the properties that you have identified. Do we have any indication on who those owners are?
When a property's been there for, say, ten years or more and it's been collapsing the whole time, that owner is, has not responded. It hasn't responded to the courts. It hasn't responded to us when we send out notices. Either they moved away, they may have died, or they just can't afford it, so. Uh we try, so sometimes there may be fire escrow. We try to go after those, we get the fire escrow back. Um but it is rare that anybody that I'm aware of pays for the demolition that we do.
It is an unreasonable expectation that you will ever recover.
Recovery, right.
Um demo liens have the opposite effect. You put a very expensive lien on a vacant piece of property, so no one wants to even buy it to do anything because they can't build on it because there's such a large lien. So we haven't solved that problem.
All right. Then the next question is, in terms of identifying them, what? We spend the money to do the demo, what happens to that vacant land afterwards? Is there a plan for that?
That's a good question, but no, there's not a plan for that. I mean, currently, it's still the owner that's responsible for that property, whoever's name that is in.
Very often, they've already ended up on the registry because they're so bad. And because they're so bad, no one has bought them. So they, it failed at tax sale, it failed at judicial sale. And then it becomes, the owner's not allowed to have it back. And then the liens are wiped out by that sale. Um and then it's on the registry to be purchased for generally a nominal amount.
Okay. The next question that we're going to, if we're going to spend the money, you mentioned the different regions where we do have these houses that are in the worst condition. Are we planning to attack them in a way that, should we go through a demolition, we can have a plan for future use of that land? Or are we just going to be moving throughout the city at different places? I ask that question because if we're going to spend one-time money to do demolitions across the city, which is something that I think we all know needs to be done in some of these properties. If we're talking about affordable housing and revitalizing the city, putting out spot fires across the city with no plan on how to use that property is another waste of the resources that we do have. Again, we've been talking about this for a couple of years since that money, um since we knew the amount of money that the city was going to receive. Um and so is there a plan there?
There is not a plan, but these properties are so, it's not like they're all in one area.
I understand that. I understand that.
One on one side.
Right.
Right across the street. So I don't know how you plan on what you're going to do with one lot and how. You know, like I get it if it was going to be blocks.
Um I guess, well then, what I'll do then, so we'll have more opportunities to have public comment and get different discussion. One request that I would have is for those that are in the grade one, could we get either a map or identify all of those lots somewhere so that we can see what those are? Um I think if we're going to, like I said, not, this is a the expense that I think the city needs, you know, it's unfortunate. Well, I know how much money we have, but if we're going to, so we have between thirty-five and twenty-four is the amount we would be able to do. One of those two numbers, right?
Right, or in between, yeah.
Right, or in between based upon the combination of contractors versus in-house. I don't know, for my colleagues, this is another quick comment before I continue is maybe we need to look at potentially bringing on another in-house person to do demolition if we're going to be able to potentially save costs if we can find an employee. But uh yeah, I just want to make sure we're using this money to the best of our ability. And I think it's going to be incumbent upon us as we look at this to work on developing a plan and having that list of those grade ones that want to come down is going to be important. Because you just, I just don't want hodgepodge across the city. There's no plan. And then we end up with more vacant lots with no real ability to um put those lots back into use, put them back on the tax rolls, have someone potentially, you know, look at building up areas in our community. Uh so with that, thank you and thank you, Chair Green.
Thank you very much, Councilman Majors. Did you want to add anything, Director West? I've seen you come to the table. Did you want to add anything before I move on to President Bowers for further questions? All right.
Good evening, Council. Uh so Councilman Majors was discussing about the demolition crew, which is under Public Works. Uh I agree totally. Uh ten, twelve years ago, when I was supervisor of the demolition department, before I became the deputy director of Public Works, we started out with five demolition in the crew. It continued to evaporate as the years continued to go on. And we are currently down to one demolition specialist and one crew leader. So as you stated, Councilman, it will be a gesture for us to be able to accomplish another uh demolition specialist to increase the in-house demolition. As Anne stated about the demolition crew working on a Wednesday in sanitation, that's only because we didn't have a full complement of sanitation. But once we receive a full complement of sanitation, the demolition specialist nor the demolition crew leader will no longer be a part of the sanitation crew on Wednesday. They will be doing demolition on a daily basis. And we will be able to accomplish more demolition than we've ever had. And along with the spring before the summer, before we start paving, we also use our street maintenance workers and our heavy equipment operators to be a part of demolition to continue to operate under demolition to, to uh tear down more properties than the, up to the forty, the thirty-five. We will be able to exceed and accomplish that goal. And that's not including the funding that's in the budget.
Yeah, that's, this is, we're talking ARPA funding right now. So I'm with you, you serve as public works chair, as you know, so that's why I'm looking at it, so I appreciate that.
Yes, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, President Bowers?
Thank you. Um, so since we're on the topic, my first question will be directed to, um, Mr. West. So you mentioned that there, ten to twelve years ago, were the five demolition staffers full-time employees dedicated to demolition?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you. Now, um, Ms. Montgomery, Mr. Maisel, could you go, could you please go back to the slide where it noted the regions and the total? Okay, thank you. I missed the total. So the total condemned buildings is six hundred and five, is that correct? Okay, and could you please share, uh, where region one is? I missed that two in my notes.
Yeah, so region one is starting at McLean and going south to into Shypoke to the end of the city line on that.
Okay.
So it goes from front then also to Cameron.
Okay. Thank you. And then my final question, and I don't know if this is appropriate for either YouTube or, um, someone else from the administration, but are there any plans to make appointments to the Property Reinvestment Board? That is supposed to be the city's tool, um, for blighted properties. I know you mentioned, um, sometimes it's difficult to locate the owner or, um...
Yeah, the short answer is that has not been on the agenda of late. Property Reinvestment Board, which has been non-operative for a number of years.
I know.
Was operating in a manner that was, um, inconsistent with the law.
Okay.
It resulted in a claim of taking a property without proper due process. So it was put back into place. Under the law, the Planning Commission has a role, which had just been sort of wiped out of reality. And so it's not as simple as just reappointing him, it's re-establishing the whole process.
Okay.
And so, but it has not been on the agenda. I'm happy to raise it with the mayor, uh, as, if it's a priority of council, uh, to get there. Um, but, uh, it, it involves HRA, it involves the Planning Commission, it involves the DBHD, it involves codes, it's, and whether the rule should be rewritten is a fair question because it's, it's sort of convoluted the way it was written as a law. Um, and, uh, I think that's part of why it was hard to get it resurrected. Mr. Woolley was the last person to try to, to recreate it, and it just didn't get done.
Okay. Thank you. I was just curious about that. Um, yeah, I did have one more question. Oh, I just wanted to say thank you for sharing the criteria. It's something that I've been asking for, for years now. Because in my plain sight as a resident and just viewing a property that seemed to be a prime candidate for demolition, I was previously told by codes that it didn't meet whatever criteria, but the criteria was never shared. Um, so I think, um, in plain sight, and I did share pictures of properties that, um, absolutely fell into the criteria that you mentioned that could pose, um, a public safety threat or issue for neighboring properties. Um, the properties were literally leaning, so I was fearful that if we had a really hot summer, there would be a fire and something would happen to the other neighboring property, uh, residents. Or if we had a really bad winter, um, the roof that was already leaning could cave in, there were squatters. Um, so I just appreciate the criteria and the knowledge of what, um, constitutes a building that is, um, unsound and a candidate for demolition.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Lawson?
Thank you. Mr. West, um, what would you say is our capacity as of this point for, um, tearing down the, the properties?
As far as our capacity, what do you say?
What I, I mean with our, our current staff, like how many, um, are we able to do in-house, I should say? Um, as far as getting someone out there, how much of that thirty-five are we able to, uh, accomplish with our, our current regimen?
Currently, we are in the process of hiring uh, more street maintenance workers and heavy equipment operators. We just lost three individuals uh, in the past two weeks in our highway department. And we are in a hiring process currently to, uh, bring our department back up to the status of five heavy equipment operators, five street maintenance workers, two demolition specialists, one specialist, one crew leader, construction tradesmen. And during this time, through the winter going into the spring, we will have more, uh, resources to be able to demolition until we get into the summer. Once we get into the summer, we will start our paving pro, paving process to where part of our department will break off from the demolition aspect into the paving aspect, because throughout the summer, that's what we do. But we will still be attentive to our demolition department once, because of the full complement of our sanitation department, which we're working on currently.
Okay, and so then we believe that the thirty-five is something that's manageable with what we have kind of outlined for, uh, the money like we did in-house. We could break into thirty-five properties, we could pull down with the, uh, the money that's been corrected, um, that's been asked for, correct?
I'm not going to say we'd be able to do the total thirty-five, or you asked, if you asked me within one year, we would not be able to do it because depending on the season of the winter, because the entire department that does the paving and, uh, leaf season and the demolition, we go into the winter season, the entire department switches to a winter mode, and we are in snow mode. So everyone that does every other thing throughout the city, we all focus on the snow aspect. Well, fortunately, that we haven't had a lot of snow this year, we've been able to do more demolition and carry out, um, other affairs that we are not normally doing, because we're in snow mode currently, because we're still in the winter season. We just haven't received a lot of snow like they received all over the country.
May I add to that then too? So those thirty-five properties that for ARPA money to be spent, won't have to be done in all one year, and a lot of that will be contracted out also.
Right, I was just figuring if we can do more in-house than we may be able to save, um, and, and have a higher total as opposed to, with the ARPA money as opposed to contracting out quite as many.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I agree. I mean, last year.
That's true.
Took down eleven of them last year from in-house.
Great, and, um, I think, Mr. Grover, you may have answered a question that I had, was it, there are mechanisms for us to, uh, take ownership of the properties, and I think you said that's something that we have to reinvent.
The board has not sat, but there's also HRA, which is the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority, the Land Bank is also, so, so there does have to be sort of a discussion about which mechanism you use for which type of property it is. Uh, they're just, they're just us, and, uh, each of those are separate entities we all work with. Um, and a lot of times, they all end up involved, uh, in particular property or properties. Um, and ju- just to add to the question about the one point five, you have till December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six to spend it if council approves that. Um, everything else that I think Mr. West has talked about, and is, that's all money we already fund under the general fund and under, so, so whatever this is, is on top of that, right? That's the thing. So if you take that same time period of three years of budgets for general fund, for demos, uh, specialist demolitions, and you add this to it, you can sort of extrapolate out how much money you would have for that period total, which would be four and a half million dollars maybe over between now and twenty-twenty-six to do the demolitions. I mean, so that when you add the ARPA money to it, when you add what, what you take for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, you know, you, you take that, you're doing what, seven hundred thousand, sometimes you don't.
Right, that was your twenty-two.
Yeah, so it, we, we do, if you look at that in totality of what the program will be, that is the, that's sort of the context of it.
Great. Thank you, thank you, um, very much.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you, Director, um, Montgomery and Director West for being here this evening. I just had, I didn't have a really a question, it's more of a clarification, half-question, I guess. Um, from the slide, so total, there's six hundred and five condemned buildings that rate from a grade one through five in the city line. Okay, and out of that six hundred and five, a hundred and eleven of them are grade one?
They're the ones that are collapsing.
Grade ones that are collapsing, okay. So out of, and that's out of the six hundred and five, so then the ARPA money would take, out of the one hundred and eleven, the ARPA money could possibly take care of twenty-four to thirty-five of the homes out of it. That's what we're saying, correct?
Right.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Just using the ARPA money.
Right.
And, and that's what Neil Grover was.
That's on top of what's budgeted.
Top of, like, last year was sixteen of them.
Right. Okay, I got it, right, all right, thank you. That's what I needed.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for, uh, for the Coles Department before we move on to the next? Thank you none. Thank you very much, uh, Director Montgomery and Director West for being here, and thank you for your presentation. And I believe we'll move on to the next subject. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Denise Hill, Director of, uh, Department of Building and Housing.
Good evening, good evening. How are you all tonight? Good. Denise Hill, Director of Housing and Economic Development. So I will be going through the affordable housing, the assistance to low-income residents, and business assistance portions of the proposal. So first slide here, we see, uh, eight million going toward affordable housing. Um, you'll see some, uh, information about how the program is, uh, set up currently. That is the first pack, in your packet that you, that I just handed out. Those would be the proposed guidelines for that, for that program. I'll, uh, draw your attention to the one, two, three, third, uh, bullet. Standards would mirror the HUD-approved home development funding to ensure federal guidelines and fidelity. Also, a stringent scoring rubric will need to be used, using a panel of professionals to make sure that these are not arbitrarily given out, these funds are fair across the board, and, uh, again, with integrity and fidelity. So here you'll see some pictures. These are pictures of completed programs that we've done through home development. The homes that you see there are at Fifteenth and Swatara through Tri-County Housing Corporation. So these would be the types of units that we will be looking for. Just for clarification, the eight million would be able to go towards both rental and also, um, for-sale homes. So of the eight million, I've calculated, uh, administrative costs of eight hundred thousand, leaving seven million two hundred dollars to go towards actual units, the construction of them. So that would be up to a hundred units at seventy-two thousand dollars per unit. So as we know, on the previous slide, there was a bullet there. These could be used for matching or right-to-direct costs for construction. Um, all new construction, uh, developers will need to piecemeal it, so this will just be a piece of it. Now, we could lower the amount of units to increase the amount that would be given per developer. So the one hundred units is the maximum amount. Moving on, we have the ten thousand dollars in homeowner occupied assistance. So this mirrors our housing rehabilitation program that we currently run out of DBHD. That's the second packet that you are, yeah, second packet that you see in your folder. So it is mirrored exactly like it. Ten thousand dollars would be able to go to homeowners who need to bring their ha- houses up to code. Uh, they would be able to pick from a pre-approved list of contractors that have been vetted and currently work with the city. And then the payments would go directly to the contractor. So with how it is structured now, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in administrative costs, four million seven hundred fifty thousand towards, uh, homeowners, and then that would be up to four hundred and seventy-five homeowners assisted. Here are some before and after pictures, uh, from current HRP projects that we have.
My apologies, uh, for the before and after text there.
That wasn't me. I appreciate that.
It was me.
All right. And we'll go on by that, so it doesn't stay up there too long. There we go. All right, so the next portion is one million dollars going towards delinquent payments or trash bills. So this helps with a, a health hazard in the city to help bring people, get them caught up if they were laid off, lost their job, or, um, just overall bills have changed. Because of the pandemic, a million dollars would go towards that. And I will be working in conjunction with Director West, and then that's the third package you see. So this is mirrored exactly like the rent relief program that we ran. We did a million dollars in rent, mortgage, and utility assistance, but this one would go directly to just the utility of trash bills for residents in the ci, in the city. And then lastly, we have the business, small business assistance. And this would mirror the Neighborhood Business Stabilization Grant. Um, that was also previously run by DBHD. And, uh, that would be ten thousand dollar micro loans, or forgivable loans, excuse me, directly to small businesses. And that's the last packet that you have in your folder, the application. And for that, uh, calculated fifty thousand dollars in administrative costs, four hundred and fifty thousand towards small businesses, which would mean up to forty-five businesses would be assisted. And just to jump back, uh, a hundred thousand dollars, this was for the, the utility bills, the statistics for that, a hundred thousand dollars in administrative costs, nine hundred thousand dollars toward delinquent bills, and then, so that would be up to one hundred and eighty delinquent bills satisfied if we capped it at five thousand dollars per household.
There any questions? Thank you very much. Um, I've got a couple, uh, but I'll just ask more or two, and then I'll, I'll pass it off to my colleagues. Uh, the first one for the affordable housing, uh, you said that the criteria or the, there will be a pre-approved list of, uh, contractors already. Is the list of contractors already created, or will businesses still be able to get on that list?
So the affordable housing, the pre-approved contractor list is actually for the homeowner occupied, the second packet that you have.
All right. And is the list already created?
Yes, we, we maintain one, but we would also open it up because of the amount of money. Um, one of the hardest things is for contractors in the city to, um, navigate our procurement system. So they have to front the costs, and then they have to pay their workers, they have to buy, you know, materials, and then on the back end, they are reimbursed. So that's how the DBHD is currently set up. Everything is reimbursable. So we do all of the monitoring and the due diligence on the front end.
Okay. Um, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to my colleagues, and then I'll come back to myself if I still have somewhere.
Okay.
I will start to my fa, to my, not so far right, but to my right, with Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Hello, Director Hill. Thank you for being here tonight. I have more of just clarification.
Sure.
There were a lot of numbers thrown at me.
Yes.
That was what made sure I have them right. So for the, um, the first one, I think you were asking for eight million for, I think it was housing development, like the ones you showed on Swatara's, Swatara Street?
Correct, yes.
Which I will say is a big hit. I know a lot of residents have made that their focal point to say, why don't we have more houses like this in the city? So they like them. I feel like they look like little villas. I think they're cute with all the different colors. But, um, how many houses would you be able to build with the eight million dollars?
Sure, so it would actually be seven million two hundred thousand dollars. Sure, so it would actually be seven million, two hundred thousand dollars, and it would be up to, the maximum would be one hundred units if we did seventy-two thousand dollars per unit that would be offered.
Okay. And then, um, it was the utility bills, um, with the trash mainly, with delinquents bills. Um, you would be putting, was it nine hu- nine hundred thousand towards the delinquent bills?
Delinquent bills, uh, yes, because it's, it's one million dollars total.
Right.
So a hundred thousand in administrative costs, and then nine hundred thousand towards delinquent bills.
And how many delinquent bills would you be able to cover, you said, with that?
One hundred and eighty, if we cap it at five thousand dollars per household. Now, if we lower that, of course, we will be able to assist more.
Right.
Uh, there would be a number of households that have delinquencies that are significant for them, but are not at the five thousand, so.
Correct, yeah, right. Okay, um, yeah, I think that was it, those were the numbers I missed, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lawson.
Thank you very much, and, uh, thank you Director Hill. Um, just, the, the other question is again on the, uh, the seventy-two thousand per house. Is that figured as the, the cost to build, or is that basically a, a grant that's going to be, uh, given to a, a contractor who is building the affordable housing?
Correct, so the latter, so, um, it, it's a subsidy that they get on the front end. So a lot of times, if there is, um, a construction of, uh, an apartment building, only a fraction of the units will be affordable, so they'll do mixed use, so they'll be at fair market rate. So the money that we would put towards it out of ARPA would have to go towards the affordable units. Or if it, if they're building townhomes for sale, the seventy-two thousand could go towards that. But they would also, more than likely, be applying from multiple funding streams, so PHFA, Community First Fund, things like that.
Okay, great, thank you, and, and then I noticed that, um, we were looking at, uh, someone earning forty percent of the, uh, forty percent of, uh, forty percent of the housing unit must be, uh, uh, affordable to, to receive the funds, okay, that's, that's great. And then you were looking at the rental not exceeding thirty percent of the applicable income level.
Yes, correct.
Which is also something that I think is great, alright, so that's, that's everything that I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, President Bowers.
Thank you, um, I have a question regarding the Affordable Housing Program, or maybe several, so I guess if we're marrying the houses on Swatara Street, are, would these units be LERTA eligible?
They would, so we wouldn't necessarily be mirroring those houses, we would just be mirroring home development. So the criteria of how home development funding works, and that's our annual allocation that we get, approximately five hundred thousand each year. So the regulations would be congruent with home development.
Okay, I was just asking because I know in the past, we've experienced some issues with LERTA with those particular properties. Each house is under a different program, um, and we learned that, um, the occupants or residents really thought that the LERTA began when they moved in, and in some instances, it didn't. It's, it's tied to the property. Whenever the property was built, so it starts, the clock is ticking there, so I just wanted to clarify that. Um, uh, this may be like far-reaching, or I guess forward-thinking, but is there a target area that you have in mind for these, um, up to one hundred units? Is there a specific area that, uh, the mayor or you would like to see these units developed, or no?
Going back to, uh, the conversation with Director Montgomery, you know, we don't want concentrated areas of, you know, poverty or, you know, new gentrification either. So the target area essentially will be anywhere in the city. So that would be the perfect way to blend both codes and housing, the ARPA money to demo a house that is in complete disrepair, go through the process to, you know, gain access to the property, and then redevelop and build there. It, it needs to be phased, staggered, um, and well-thought-out. Because it wouldn't make sense for us to be constructing buildings one place and then tearing something down across the street or right next to it.
Particularly with no replacement, just another vacant lot.
Correct.
So would so we know building and housing would be, I guess, the enforcer with this program, or, okay, the sole enforcer, or would you work with codes or some, what other uh, either bureaus or departments would be involved in supporting the Affordable Housing Program?
So Affordable Housing, they would still need to run through zoning, planning, they would have to get permits through codes. So it would be just like any other development in the, in the city, so it would absolutely be a collaboration with multiple departments.
Okay. Um, I, I don't think I have any other questions, um. So, okay, maybe not. The Affordable Housing Program, I guess, is the only, well, if it's marrying the home development funding criteria, maybe it's not. So the other two, the rent relief program and the Neighborhood Business Stabilization Grant Program, the other pieces that are involved here are just replicating those programs that were previously administered.
Uh, specifically, we're out of CARES Act funding just from HUD, so this money's from Treasury, but the small business as well as the rent relief both came from CV funds or coronavirus.
Extra funding, okay, um, and with the Neighborhood Business Stabilization Grant Program, I know we previously partnered with Impact Harrisburg, would that be another opportunity to partner with another nonprofit, or I don't know if Impact Harrisburg still has funding?
Yeah, so they, they've expended their, their first five hundred thousand, and additional five hundred thousand was used, and that was ran through, uh, CREDIT. So they were the lead on that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, uh, before opening up to Councilmen Majors, uh, just something I discussed with you a little earlier, as far as the actual administration of the programs, um, I know when it first was brought up, I did have some concerns about capacity in-house, uh, because I don't want too much put on your department. Um, not saying you can't handle it, just, you know, never wanna push yourself to the limit if it's not necessary. Uh, have you built in any ways to make sure it's enough capacity to administer these programs?
Yeah, so in the administrative costs, uh, I've factored in a two-year, uh, term for two program managers. So that they would be able, they would come in on a fixed term, and they would solely work these four programs as not to, uh, stress or strain my current team anymore, but also being very transparent that this would be until the funds are expended, um, so that then no one has an expectation that they would have to be hired on full-time.
Thank you very much for that. Councilman Majors?
Uh, thank you, um. On the, uh, on the homeowner, uh, occupied improvement program, uh, are we also so I know that the Commonwealth has a whole home repairs program that has money at the county, are we doing any uh, partnership, there can, this money be used in conjunction with any of that, or is this would be a whole separate uh, pot of money for city residents, because I think and some of our, for some of our residents, you know, ten thousand dollars could do something, but a lot of them, you know, we have a lot of older housing stock in, in, in the city, uh, are they able to use this as a portion uh, or in conjunction with any other grant programs?
They are able to use it in conjunction, but only with our HRP program because county funds are used for everything outside of Harrisburg City proper. And that's because anytime the county and the city gets like entitlement funds or similar money out of the same pot, uh, they don't use, they do the surrounding area, and then the money that the city gets is used within city limits.
Okay, and then I think that whole home repair was using ARPA funding, I, I think. So our city residents aren't eligible to receive anything from whole home repair?
Unless they write it in their plan, or the commissioners pass it, that they would lift that or request a waiver directly from HUD, because we've requested a waiver from HUD on home ARP funds, that's the one point seven five million, um, coming to DBHD. So we had to request a, uh, a waiver that we would be able to partner with them
Okay.
on project.
Alright, okay, well then, I'll, then we'll be in contact just to see if we need to coordinate there, because I think that's state money that the county has to administer, I think if our residents can benefit, we need to see if we can work, uh,
Maximize it.
maximize it right there, um, on the, uh, assistance for, uh, residents in need on the, the trash bills, uh, have we worked with uh, Public Works and/or the City Treasurer's Office to get what an average, um, delinquent bill look like, folks that are, because it, it's only for uh, bills that were through twenty twenty-two, March of twenty twenty-two.
Right.
We have an average of what that is.
Whatever, average, but currently there are sixteen hundred and twenty-eight delinquent bills in City Harrisburg, which, uh, uh, eight hundred of those bills are over five thousand dollar delinquent.
Okay, and of those, do we know if those are folks that would potentially be eligible? So I know we have a large number of accounts within the city, or we don't know if those are homeowners, um, or folks that would make the eligibility criteria.
Yeah, there is eligibility criteria that comes under this funding, um, from the actual ARPA program. Uh, some of it is income-based, some of it is impacted, um, by COVID. I mean, you, because that's what this relates to, so for example, if you lost your job, um, you, you exhausted your unemployment from that, other things, they have this list of standards. And you know, I think that could be spoken of in more detail with, uh, our consultants at a later meeting that you have, what those criterias are.
Okay, yeah, no, except I just wanna make sure that we're making sure this money's benefiting the residents that need it most, so that's a, another question we can ask. I know we're gonna have other meetings, I'll defer some of my questions to other meetings, I was getting late, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Daniels.
I'll need to digest what, um, you provided, but in general, um, is the money being allocated in a way that creates affordable housing for families? Um, especially, I mean, I think pretty much every development we've had have been like one-bedroom apartments. Um, so is there anything in there that addresses that?
Yeah, so it would be mixed, uh, use as far as families versus, that's what I was saying about rental versus homeownership. So it would be a mixture of the two. I think there is a lot of development for, uh, one-bedrooms right now, because looking at homelessness statistics, that's the greatest need at this point, is, is a one-bedroom, single individuals.
And, um, on the garbage side, I mean, are, uh, are there, in terms of deciding who will receive the benefit, like, will there be lookbacks in terms of like, were there folks who we tried to collect in the past, and then will they be barred, or, like, or have there been any decisions made regarding, like, eligibility?
I, I don't think the program's finalized yet because the council hasn't decided to appropriate the money, I mean, it's been generally outlined. The, the guiding force right here is what Treasury requires can be eligible for a program. And that is, that, that is income-driven, that is impact-driven by COVID. Um, I don't think those other details are there yet, I don't believe we're gonna be make commercial accounts, uh, available, but I'm not positive about that, I think that's a decision that has to get made collectively, the mayor has to decide if any of those, or this is all residential. Um, the, uh, obviously some small businesses were dramatically affected by COVID and have a commercial trash bill, so I don't know if we've gotten to that point, and maybe you know, Dave. There you go, we have a business person.
Just to give a little bit of look-through on, on the trash side of things, I was actually just talking to the mayor, uh, about the issue. Uh, you're looking at approximately a two-year period that we have outlined there, uh, March to March twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. If you look at the average individual trash account, we're looking at individuals two hundred and fifty percent, the twenty twenty-two HHS poverty rate and below. Uh, thirty-three dollars approximately is the trash bill, if you extrapolate that over twenty-four months, it's just under, uh, eight hundred dollars. So what we're looking at is, if we take accounts that are strictly that, it's a little bit over eleven hundred accounts that, that period of time where COVID was really at its worst, they can be wiped out. So, that's kind of the math that we're looking at. Uh, with that, and the way she's looking at it, it would not be commercial accounts. Uh, it would not be if you own a building where you're renting out five units, and you have a much larger account, that wouldn't count, it would be property owner, uh, who has a single account of that house. Um, and then for the, back to the, the housing, uh, issue, you know, looking at that, you know, what the, what the plan hopefully is, I know we were looking, you know, at pictures and thinking those individual units. What we wanna do is, is this is gonna be almost a, an RFP-type process where people are going to propose what those projects are, and then based off of, and I know it says on their DBHD staff, HUD-appointed consultants, uh, we're open to members of council taking part in that, uh, there will be, there will be other administration people involved, it's gonna be a larger group of professionals who are looking at housing from a number of different angles, from public safety, codes, to, to what Denise does, um, and then obviously, like, officials, um, and how we can best meet the needs of the city. Uh, you know, what we're hoping to get out of it is quite a bit of, uh, interest, you know, we don't know that at this point. I, it's gonna depend on passing this fund, what we get in that, uh, that dollar amount, and then seeing where we can get the best bang for our buck. And I, I, I wish we knew right now, we could build X amount of houses with that, those are just averages and approximations. So, you know, if we get, you know, somebody who can come in and do a really good job at a really good price, and do justice for the community, that's what we wanna support, we wanna support good things happening here, so there's gonna be a, a lot up in the air, especially as it relates to how many we're gonna get out of that eight million dollars, there are minimums, we're not gonna sit here and subsidize somebody to come in and pay the whole bill for them. Um, but that's also gonna be part of this panel, is to make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck with this. And it all has to be done, uh, Denise knows better than anybody, all of the rules and regs behind this, so there's gonna be quite a bit of limitations of what we can and can't do with this. Neil will be first to tell us what those limitations are.
Neil, and hopefully our consultants as well. Uh, President Bowers, I believe you had a follow-up question, did you wanna ask it now?
I did, thank you, and, um, it's just, are, so, are there any current, um, development projects that would be included in this affordable housing funding? Or is this strictly when the application becomes available, completely new development?
Like, we're not looking for something where it's halfway done or a quarter of the way done. What we're looking for are projects that are going to bring new housing here, not something that, uh, the city has completed.
But right, there, there's, there's a simple reality on the clock, right? And, and it takes a long time to do a development, we, we've talked to people for years to get to the point they actually have a written plan. So if we have to encumber the money by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the reality is, those projects have to have already been developed, on paper at least, and other funding has to have been realistically secured for the city to commit adding to the pot. I think what we don't wanna do is fund buildings that don't get built, you know, a- and that's, that's where it's gonna really be vetting. The reality is, we don't know if there's gonna be six million dollars in applications, or thirty-two million dollars in applications. But if you just take what you've seen to come through, and we were kind of doing this math very loosely in the last couple of years, there's been applications in the ballpark of about a hundred affordable housing units that have, you know, people have proposed, there's more in the pipeline. So it is at the moment become competitive for what they are. But the reality is, they have to be able to be under contract with the city for this money by the end of next year, which means they have to have their stuff lined up, and so no one's gonna come in for a dream and an idea and start from scratch.
I understand that, I just wanted to know if any of the projects were anticipating a portion of this money under the Affordable Housing Program?
I would suggest every single- I would suggest every single developer is anticipating money under the program. Um, I've I don't think any has hesitated to ask for money.
I'm sure.
Yes, and I think that, I mean, I think that's just a cold hard reality of it. We've tried to be very clear, it's going to be a competitive process um to not everyone's uh being happy about that answer. But that is the answer, it's got to be a competitive process, it's got to be criteria that are measurable in order to be have them on, that that is just simply what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Does that mean we'll be looking at um the business plans of people who are doing the development? Because I think one of the issues in our city is we've seen a lot of properties approved and they have, we have, they haven't broken ground yet years later. Um, so we we've never made assessing the strength of the business model as a component of things. Of months.
But but those plans don't have our money in them, if that, you know, there is a difference. You know, a a bank has to be satisfied with their business plan to fund it. So that's that's the reality of it. So this actually is the city putting skin in the game. If we screw this up, taxpayers of Harrisburg are on the hook for the money. That is, so you know, it's a different level of scrutiny that goes into this.
I I also just wanted to add that um once you're able to look through the packet all the way, there are clawback concessions in the proposed policy as well as they uh they can't cease operations. So it does have to come to fruition, that's actually on the front end as a part of the RFP. Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Green. Um, just briefly with the Small Business Assistance Grant Program, uh was there anything or any reason specifically why we couldn't assist nonprofit businesses as well?
That under uh CDBG.
Different, but that couldn't take place with the ARPA with this particular?
Correct, there isn't any mechanism right now that assists the businesses, but there are things in place for nonprofits.
For that specific structure? Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you, any other questions or comments for Director Hill? Thank none, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Um, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more from you as we go through the process.
And batting cleanup, we have Fire Chief Brian interline.
There we go, good evening, council.
Good evening.
Got a full season's worth of this coming up.
Okay, for the uh ARPA funding for the Bureau of Fire, we're asking for nine hundred thousand dollars to replace our aging uh radio system. Uh, it will, nine hundred thousand dollars uh based upon the quotes we've received from the radio vendor, uh which I need to be very open and honest about is a singular vendor um that is chosen by Dolphin County and is also chosen by the Commonwealth. So we don't have an option to go to Plan B on it on a different radio system. It's kind of given to us, this is the only radio we can put on the system made by Motorola. Uh, so it will uh purchase about a hundred, uh the actual number is about a hundred and five portable radios. It will get us seven mobile radios to replace all the radios that are in the fire apparatus as well as four base station radios, three of which are in the fire stations and then one in a Fire Bureau headquarters over in the public safety building. Um, one of the uh great aspects of of what we'd be able to do, um we issue these out currently, so it's by riding position. Uh, we give our members the ability to have their identifier actually programmed into their radio. So in the event that they become lost, disoriented, we know exactly who that is. It builds into uh our ability to track our personnel inside of burning buildings and other places. Um, it also increases, one of the issues that we uh deal with uh regionally here is the inability to con to to communicate with each other on the fire ground. So uh you can imagine what it's like going to another municipality, uh my radio doesn't talk to your radio uh and that becomes an issue. Some technologies have been built into Dolphin County, which has been great. It allows for the patching of the radio channels uh through a a a patch internally with the computer system. However, it is not a hundred percent reliable. Uh, this would give us the ability, when we go to Cumberland County, we can actually switch to Cumberland County's frequency on our radios currently. Um, and not that many years ago, about five or six years ago, we actually had to carry uh a second radio with us to be able to communicate uh with those folks in Cumberland County. So it'll give us the ability to dial in. Uh, regionally, we're also going to uh the Motorola system, which is going to allow more municipalities. When we go to Franklin County or we go somewhere further out, we'll be able to link right into their system uh unimpeded. Uh, the current radio fleet uh is about fourteen years old. Uh, we have about twenty radios or so that we purchased uh recently over the last uh I think the first purchase order I put in was in December of twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, and that's when we bought our first uh five or six. And they they run around seven thousand dollars apiece. So this isn't like we're buying uh a a radio, you can go out to Radio Shack uh or I guess Walmart and pick up. The Motorola estimates, uh their their estimation on radio life is about uh ten years. Our current radio fleet, uh apparatus radios, uh the reserve radios we have for our firefighters and then the base stations is already fourteen years old. Those, all those radios were replaced fourteen years ago when Dolphin County floated a bond to replace the entire radio system to go to a P twenty five system. That was part of the uh post nine eleven uh era of going to a singular radio source uh for better interoperability. And we are now twenty three years almost past uh nine eleven and we still don't have that interoperability uh even locally here. So this this radio, these new radios will give us the ability to get that interoperability uh in in front of us and and actually working for our firefighters. And yeah, so you know, what do we talk about, uh you know, do we just yap on the radio? Uh, got a little clip of a a fire that occurred down on South Thirteenth Street. Uh, and this this is uh, you know, th- this fire went from zero to a hundred uh with about six firefighters inside and conditions worsening. Uh, and without having the ability to communicate with those fires inside, uh we could have lost firefighters that day. Uh, and that's, th- this will kind of give you the idea of some of those frantic radio conversations that we have to have.
Everybody out, everybody out.
That that's just a real quick glimpse um of, I wanted to use Harrisburg radio traffic as opposed to a May Day or something that may have happened elsewhere. But that is uh imagine being on the inside of that building, the incident commander standing on the outside. Uh, we see things going bad, not being able to communicate with those inside. Uh, having a new radio system will allow us to do that not only here in the city of Harrisburg, but as we go out and help our mutual aid partners uh regionally throughout the greater Harrisburg area. And with that, I I do want to, and and I know it's not my uh not not undermined, but I believe that the two other things, we look at public safety. Uh, when we look at that, I think the two other projects that have been presented to City Council tonight, the demolition of bladed buildings and the Affordable Housing Program are uh key components of what we have strived for for public safety in the city of Harrisburg. The new housing, uh as as we put new housing up, tho- that housing has to meet the new building codes. Those new building codes require fire sprinklers. Uh, those fire sprinklers put out that fire and protect the residents. And what we know is nationally, uh those in in the low to moderate income impoverished families are sixty five percent more likely to die in a home fire uh than a somebody living above the poverty line. So when we look at that, that affordable housing has a direct result of the potential to save lives because of the way those buildings are built and protected with fire sprinkler systems. And additionally, um the one point five million for uh the demolition of bladed properties, uh you you've heard me down in front of of you folks for the last ten years now. Uh, the fight that we've had with bladed properties, slum lords, uh it is continual. Uh, just uh July of this year, Ann and I were just talking about this today as as we were preparing. Uh, with uh two bladed properties sat in the middle of a row, uh two homeowners on on either end, two uh properties on either end, three families affected by a fire that started in a uh bladed property owned by a slum lord uh who who lives in Steel and the other one lives in Philadelphia. Uh, and that affected those three families. And had there been money to be able to take those buildings down, the fire would have never occurred. So being able to look at uh and and map where these where these properties are, which we'll have for you, I believe will be able to make a huge impact, not only looking at the building, but looking at the impact that it has individually to our community uh members that are living next to these properties that are in just absolute horrendous shape. Uh, and and I look forward to what that impact is uh not only from tearing the building down, but from the public safety standpoint and the reduction of fires and the potential loss of life.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open up to my colleagues for any questions. I'm going to start to my far left with the Public Safety Chair with Councilman Rodriguez.
Uh, thank you, Chair Green. Um, no questions, I'm familiar with the Ask uh Chief and myself since by the beginning of the year, I've had these discussions with the Walkies and several other things. So I'm glad we're finally to this point and um definitely support. And I know how, taking the training myself, know how important um it definitely can be at times of despair. So uh thank you for being here as always, Chief, and look forward to uh seeing everyone with their own walkie suit.
You bet, and in full disclosure, Councilman Rodriguez was in a pitch dark building. Uh, and we put him in a maze where he did get lost and he can tell you it was a, it was a little uh scary and there's no smoke or fire or heat.
Oh, yeah, and with the weight of the suit on fully going, you just never know what's at your right, what's at your left. Communication with your teammates, with your co-firefighters, that's really determining life or death. So I I appreciate, you know, the opportunity, I look forward to many more.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
No questions.
President Bowers?
Just one, could you please review the numbers? I have a hundred and five portable radios and the four base station radios, but I think I missed something in the middle.
Seven mobile radios and they're the ones that would go in the fire trucks.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson.
Thank you, I I don't have any uh questions, uh if we're talking about the the lives of our firefighters, I I'm all behind it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you for being here, Chief Interline, we really appreciate it. Um, I don't have any questions, my question was answered, it was about the numbers too, I missed that seven mobile radio, so thank you.
I must have went through that too fast.
No, no, you didn't, it just numbers, a lot of numbers tonight. My hand is, yeah, I know they are, I got them ready, thank you.
Thank you, I don't have any questions myself, thank you for being here tonight, Chief. And we appreciate all the work that you and uh your crew do.
Thank you, appreciate the support.
I think that wraps up uh everything for Bill Five. Um, and so we will continue this conversation at further meetings. Uh, I do not recommend this goes to the next legislative session. Um, and I will update everyone probably within the next week with uh potential dates and uh Councilman Majors.
Oh, no, just one question, Chair, and I guess for our Communications Director as well. Will any of these documents be made available to the public or posted on uh either the city website or available on a a city council website, that's all?
I I can make these documents first thing in the morning, uh work on, working to put them on our website.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And Council, uh Chairwoman Green, I just wanted to note for for context, um you mentioned maybe uh the end of May, two months from now, or maybe it's the beginning of May, just in terms of an RFP for professional services that would go out after that approval. Earliest it probably gets done is July, you get a contractor and a design on board. The biggest challenge is going to be the ones where like the pool and things like that, where we had to get a construction contract bid after that happens. So um I'm just pointing out the timetable we have. We could get a bid successfully done in twenty twenty four if we have a sound design. Um, and as long as it's under contract in twenty twenty four, because then they're going to be limited by the construction season, about when they can go to work. But that would really be, if if you're counting backwards for any of the programs you're looking at, you got to count back from that December twenty twenty four and how long it realistically takes to get something launched and under contract from beginning to end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to the next piece of legislation, which will be Resolution eighteen, which is a resolution approving the first proposed twenty twenty three operations related budget reallocation.
And Michael, did you get the amended version from security? Okay. Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, council.
If you could just all introduce yourself before you begin.
Timothy Brooks, with the Budget Manager.
Uh, Brian McCutcheon, Accounting Manager.
Rita Kelly, Director of Budget and Finance.
Matt Maisel, Director of Communications.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, um tonight before you is the city of Harrisburg's first proposed uh twenty twenty three budget adjustment slash uh reallocation in which uh incorporates the General Fund and the Neighborhood Services Fund. Um, the first ask, uh excuse me, the first ask, which is much def- desperately needed, uh comes from the Bureau of Communications, and he asks us for a hundred thousand dollars uh is for proposed budget adjustments to accommodate the purchase of the City Council Chamber's technological upgrades. I'm sure everyone can understand the the importance of that so that the uh citizens can hear us during these meetings. We have uh up to date equipment to use while uh conducting these meetings. The second ask, um it's coming out of the, well, excuse me, the second ask from the Neighborhood Services Fund, um is really just a misunderstanding and oversight that happened during the course of the twenty twenty three budget process, which led to a technical position correction to approve to the to to the approved twenty twenty three budget and annual salary and related payroll tax expenses. Um, ultimately, the positions in question are the two heavy equipment operators, one demolition specialist and the street maintenance worker, and then the FICA, um FICA expenses related to each position. Timing had a little of aid in terms of um this occurring, but um moving forward, if we can uh implement things that will prevent uh hiring or not even necessarily prevent hiring, but just hold off during the budget process, then we'll be able to capture all of the information that was missed during this, within this reallocation ask. And exhibit B. In exhibit B, um the ask here is for a hundred thirty five thousand dollars for information technology, for the Bureau of Information Technology. Uh, much of you may have known as it was on the news as well, um the leak or water damage that occurred to the city uh Government Center. And now we have the need to transfer the hosting of the production main fan equipment and processing equipment to the Bear Consulting Room. Um, and the related movement of the money within that. Ultimately, um from our surplus, from our budget surplus and our appropriated expenditures, it would leave us around a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars and a hundred and fifty five dollars, a hundred and fifty three thousand, a hundred and fifty five dollars to allocate. To allocate one to Exhibit B, to Exhibit A for the uh City Council technological upgrades. And then B, the remaining fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars for the. Information technology, um, movement of the, of the mainframe information. That is all that we have in this terms of record of a reallocation, um, if you have any questions.
Alright, um, so the funds are coming from budget surplus from last year?
Hold up, um, write that, um, Tim, if you could just scroll down a little bit on that Exhibit B. It's a bit, it's a bit. But again, that, that net budget surplus in the original budget uh for, for current year was a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. And we're using one hundred for the, the technological equipment upgrade for here. So there's no draw on, on fund balance for that in its entirety. But for the, the IT need to, the move to the. Mainframe to the data center, total ask is a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So what's left on the, the net budget surplus is fifty-three thousand, one fifty-five. So that gets absorbed right away and that brings us down to a zero net budget surplus. So the difference between the one thirty-five uh ask for, for IT. And the use of uh the budget surplus is the eighty-one thousand, eight forty-five, that, that will come from uh cash fund balance.
Okay.
Oh, uh, yeah, Marita brings up a good point too, because of the, the nature of that need, the, the IT. And effect of a water damage, uh, we would expect some type of insurance-related reimbursement uh to occur at some point. Which, that can be revisited, you know, relative to what we've budgeted uh in, in that revenue line for a current year.
Thank you very much. I, I don't have any other questions, I'll open it up to my colleagues to see if they have any questions regarding this. I'm gonna start to my right here with Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you Vice President Green, um, good evening to you all, thank you for being here. Um, I don't have any questions, you just answered it when you broke down the um surplus and the difference, that was mine, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson.
Thank you, I, I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
No questions, I understand the need to make the move, so I'm good, thanks.
And Councilman Rodriguez.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. After no further questions on this, I would ask for this resolution to be moved to our next legislative agenda. And then we will move on to Resolution 20 of 2023. Which is a resolution approving a proposed 2023 debt-related budget reallocation. Authorizing a prepayment in accordance with the terms of the third amended and restated settlement agreement. Between the City of Harrisburg and Ambac Assurance Corporation. And otherwise resolving the remaining forbearance liability of the City of Harrisburg arising from certain defaulted 1997 bond obligations.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, good evening again, Council, just did a quick switch on you with, with Tim and myself. President Bowers, uh, Chair, Chair Green. What's up on the screen right now is, uh, at the onset of tonight, I made a uh paper handout to you, which is, is this PowerPoint. And there's also a, a, a front page summary schedule attached, but I'll go through the PowerPoint, it's only four slides. Uh, just a little bit of history on the, the, the 97 D bonds and, and F notes. And the purpose of um the issuance of those bonds way back in 1997. And th- them being of a, a capital appreciation nature. And the uh bond insurer is mentioned at the time was, was Financial Guarantee and now, of course, has evolved into Ambac Assurance Corp. Uh, the second slide, um, the, the DNF bonds and notes. Back in 2012 and 2013, under the distress the city was experiencing financially. The city defaulted in, in full during those two years on the payments to the bondholders and the note holders. Also subsequently, 2014 through 2017, there were additional bond insurance draws or advances made. Which is uh developed into the uh forbearance liability that we all know uh from our recent analysis. And at the time, the payback on the uh forbearance liability established in 2013. And, and the subsequent advances, it was structured to coincide with uh the actual payoff, full payoff of the D bonds and F notes. Which, as you know, happened last September. So that, that debt has uh been fully satisfied, the actual bonds and notes. But with the onset of 2023, uh, the payments back to Ambac have become more significant and more meaningful. Uh, the third slide, uh, with, with, with the interest expense, of course, has been a significant uh burden to the city. On, on this forbearance liability. And starting actually earlier than, than uh 2021. Uh, uh, more work was done on trying to resolve how the city could go about. Uh, making more significant payments to alleviate that, that building interest expense. So in 2021, the city, in cooperation with Ambac, did make a significant payment, which was four million dollars. And was also coupled with a credit that Ambac afforded the city of three point, approximately 3.3 million. That was done on the condition that this also defeats the HRA, that's the Redevelopment Authority. Revenue, guaranteed revenue bonds, the city guaranteed those bonds, uh, uh, to fully defees them. Which would allow uh the credit to couple the four million dollar prepayment the city made. So that was very significant, the end of 21, uh, the city achieved 7.3 million uh reduction of that forbearance liability. And then we also, a little too fast there, uh, and when 2022 came around for, for budgeting purposes as well. We were still under the very small payments with Ambac, because the actual uh GO bonds. The D bonds, the F notes, still had one more year to go. Uh, once we achieved that last year in, in mid-September, uh, we continued our look at our cash position, which was. Uh, quite strong, and you, we, we went through it together. We determined, uh, uh, the, the approval was made to do an additional twelve million dollar prepayment on the forbearance liability. And so that, that occurred, which brings us now into 2023. And next week, we have the first um scheduled repayment coming up for this year. And the remaining balance on the forbearance liability is the eight point three million dollars. Uh, that actually should say at the top, uh, final payment of the forbearance liability. Because really, the D and the F bonds are fully off the table and, and paid. So that's a very uh quick overview. One thing I wanted to point out on that, that handout I did. Um, on that schedule, which shows all the, the activity throughout uh the, the years going back to 2012. But at the very bottom, I just did a summary of the interest expense savings. So what I just went through at, at the very bottom there, in 2021, I mentioned the four million dollar prepayment. The credit that Ambac afforded the city, the city, that, that really actually has resulted in 3.6 million dollars in interest expense savings. As well, the twelve million dollar payment we did uh last December is another 3.3 million. And, and why that's slower is because of the change in the interest rate, we're, we're currently paying 5% on this, which was part of the structured amended settlement. The original stated interest rate was 6.75%, so that's why you have a bigger number uh in 2021. So uh, in, in the end, the city is poised right now for uh the next date, which I mentioned is next week. Remaining balance, uh, it's a little over 8.3 million. Uh, if the city makes that payment, we will have saved interest cost of uh 7.3 million. And not only that, it's, it, it, it dovetails nicely with the, the recent completion of uh the debt that was uh eliminated last year with, with the D bonds and the F notes. Any comments or questions on that overview? So that brings me finally to what I have up on the screen. Uh, is specifically all about Ambac and. The proposed amendment to achieve, to achieve the 8.3 million would be a budget adjustment of. Uh, 4.447 million, coming out of the General Fund for Transfer to the Debt Service Fund. Using uh again, uh, cash fund balance. Which, all along, the, the work we put into any, any significant payments that the city has been proposing. The, the idea has been to use fund balance to, to fund those payments, and that is reasonably acceptable to uh utilize fund balance in that way. Number one, to eliminate this debt, and, and number two, to finally uh stop the interest uh clock from running. So that would be a transfer to the Debt Service Fund, and that allows us to increase in the Debt Service Fund. Uh, the budget there by the 4.447 million for uh, uh, principal and interest cost. And, and we'd have confirmed uh with the representative from Ambac, uh, uh, about the, not. We're not confirming that we're doing a, a final payoff, but just wanted to confirm the balance. So we knew going into this presentation for you that we had an accurate balance uh for this evening. Any questions, or if any, any of my team has any further input they'd like to offer, please feel free to do so.
I just want to um thank um both Council on President Bowers and Chair Green for, for their support and working with our team. And um, I can tell you that uh my team, Brian in particular, has spent laborious hours trying to pull this all together. So just want to give them, both Mr. Brooks and Mr. McCutcheon, full credit for, for their due diligence for this evening.
Thank you, I do have a couple of questions, kind of just to clarify things, I know we, we've spoken about it before, but just kind of clarifying it in public. Last year, we had a budget surplus, I know towards the end of the year, you gave us an estimate of what the budget surplus might be. Could you give us what the budget surplus was at the end of last year?
Yes, um. What, um, in summary, uh, it, the, if you take the net, if you take revenue for, this is for 2022. If you take total revenue and total expenses. Uh, the net of those two, and then further reduce that by uh the payments the city made against prior, prior year encumbrances. And then you have to add back the 12 million that we did do uh in 2022, that prepayment. Had we, had we not done the 12 million, um, the, the, the resulting net, net revenue would have been approximately 8.1, 8.1 million.
Thank you.
And oh, I'm glad you brought that up, because I, 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 I almost forgot to mention this too. Currently, this is, I think, quite meaningful, um, cash, cash position right now. Uh, the end of February, uh, the General Fund has a little over 25 million dollars. Um, if you, you do, if you move forward it, and uh, if the city would make this 8.3 million dollar payment for next week. It would bring us down to 16.7 million in remaining cash. And um, last year, late summer, early fall, we, we appeared before you and we did a presentation or a projection of what we thought. It was, it was based on what would happen had the city paid this off, uh, you know, before the end of last year. And based on that, we, as far as recovering for such a significant payment, over 20 million dollars, had, had, had that happened. What it would do to our cash, and it would bring it down, of course, uh, much lower than, than, than what it is now. But then with uh January through April of 23, we projected uh our cash position would be 22. Point two million at the, as, as of the end of April. So along those lines, uh, if you take out, if, if the city would make this payment next week, again, we would go down to 16.7 million. Can we get back up to 22.2 by the end of April, and I think that's reasonable. Mainly because we're in this period right now of receiving uh, uh, discount real estate tax payments. And that, 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 that is a significant piece of the city's revenue in the early part of uh the year. So I'm, I'm quite confident that we. Uh, but there's quite, there's, there's much reason to think that, uh, you know, we, we can hit that particular target uh in the next two months.
Thank you very much for that, uh, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for questions, I'm going to start to my right here with Councilwoman Ross.
Um, thank you again for you all being here, I don't have any questions, you explained it very well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Lawson.
Thank you very much, um, thank you for presenting this information to us. And the, the only question I have is, uh, as we just spoke of, um. Getting our, our cash balances back to uh 22,000, is, is that a, 22 million, is that a, um. Our target of, of the cash on hand that we're looking for, or what we can say is, is a healthy balance?
Oh, I, I, I believe it's certainly healthy, uh, it, back then, when we did the presentation last year, there, it wasn't designed as a target. It was just to try to give everybody a sense of what be the effect of doing a full payoff before the end of 2022. And how the city would recover um through, through April of, of the current year. We've just, uh, in, in effect, what we're proposing, proposing tonight is just delaying, instead of doing 20 million back in December, we, we did 12. And now we're looking to request the, the additional 8.3. But again, I, I think that's, um, it's the, the, the way of, of achieving that 22.2 million by, by the end of April. I, I think it's uh a, a reasonable uh statement.
Thank you very much.
President Bowers.
Thank you, I'm calling Councilwoman Daniel so she can listen in, I have you on speaker, um, but I'm, okay. Um, I don't have any questions, I just want to thank you all for all of your diligence with this issue, I know that it's been a long time coming. Um, so I'd just like to thank you for all of your hard work, um, and dedication to this effort.
Appreciate that.
Just looking at you, um, Councilman Majors.
Oh, uh, thank you, um, yeah, no, no, no real questions, but, you know, I just want to thank, you know, all the folks in uh finance. And our budget on working on this, uh. All the, the members of Council, I mean, this has been a long time coming, I'm glad we were able to just, you know. I think all of us just wanted to make sure we honed the brakes just a little bit last year to ensure that the numbers were, the finances were going to come in as everyone thought. Uh, so we've been at this for, as a city, for 10 years and. Ten years and glad we're hopefully be able to close this out here relatively quickly and go to continue to move the city. Board in a positive direction, you know, recognizing that there's still a lot more work to do and, you know, hopefully one day we'll be able to. Recoup some of the funds from a lot of the. Deals that have gone on in the city in the past, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, I don't know if she's on the phone and wanted to. Okay, Councilman Rodriguez.
No comments, no questions, thank you.
All right.
Chair Green, I I I'd just be remiss. I'd also like to thank and the time and the input we received from both the the city controller's office and the city treasurer's office. They they were involved with a lot of our time and efforts as well.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you to you all for all the work that. Did Councilwoman Daniels have anything she wanted to to ask?
Okay, you want to repeat that, please?
No.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so as I was saying, I would like to say thank you to you all for all of your hard work and dedication, especially to to Mr. McCutcheon's hair for the the tireless nights of running numbers. Sending me spreadsheets when I send you random emails. Because I know for that.
It's a big number.
Yes. And thank you to everyone who's worked on this past and present. I know that we talk about things in the moment like where we're at. But I'd like to thank the people who have held these positions in the past, the past administration who worked to help build some of this surplus. Thank you to my predecessor, Councilman Alock, who made for sure that that a lot of these financial policies were put in place so that we were paying down this debt. Because we can all celebrate in the moment now, but it was a lot of work to get us to this point. So I want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you to my colleagues here and now for all the work and for for bearing with me. Sometimes when I send random text messages or calls, just trying to make sure everyone's on the same page. So thank you to everyone for their hard work. I think this is historic for the city. But it's only one step as we continue to go in the right direction. So thank you to everyone for that. And I would ask that this is placed on our special legislative agenda, which will follow this meeting after we get through everything else. And just thank you to everyone for bearing with the Budget and Finance Committee tonight because I know he helped us up. And I believe that's everything for my thoughts. I'll turn it back over to President Bowers.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again, Chair Green.
Not sure where Councilman Rodriguez.
On his way in now.
Okay.
On his way in with Mr. Miller.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we will now move to the work of the Public Safety Committee. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just, I was keeping, the doors were locked, so I had to wait for some of our appointees to come in. So if anyone could adjust that, that, you know, it's pretty late, but there are still some people coming in. With that being said, if you are here for the CLIAC board, we will read the resolutions, your names into the record here, but if you could all. Come up to the desk of these five seats right here, that would be greatly appreciated. And Mr. Parker, if we can read. Resolution twenty one. Twenty two, twenty three, four and five into the record simultaneously, and this way we can give all the appointees. A time one at after another to. Give an overview of themselves.
Yes. Resolution twenty one. A resolution confirming the appointment of Brent Miller. To serve as an inaugural member of the newly constituted Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. Resolution twenty two dash twenty twenty three. A resolution confirming the appointment of Quinton Davis to serve as an inaugural member. Of the newly constituted Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. Resolution twenty three dash twenty twenty three. A resolution confirming the appointment of Adrian Selkowitz to serve as an inaugural member. Of the newly constituted Citizens Law Enforcement and Advisory Committee. Resolution twenty four, twenty twenty three. A resolution confirming the appointment of Gia Johnson to serve as an inaugural member. Of the newly constituted Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. And resolution twenty five dash twenty twenty three. A resolution confirming the appointment of Lakeisha Carrier. To serve as an inaugural member of the newly constituted Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you for that, Mr. Parker.
You're welcome.
Thank you first and foremost to the five of you for. The extensive calls and having to deal with me calling all types of times of the day. And some of you have been, you know, on standby for nearly a year. So first and foremost, thank you for your patience and all of your willingness to serve. Very important role that we're filling tonight with these appointments. Something that has spawned since two thousand and twenty. With a lot of the hard work from my colleague to the far right, Ms. Green, thank you for everything you put into and even beforehand with Councilman. Johnson and so on and so forth. So it's something that the community has, you know, been asking for for quite some time. And it's just really that voice that when there is something, a discrepancy between the police and citizens, there's an actual board that can hopefully. Mediate and mitigate any unnecessary, you know, tension between residents and police enforcement. So with that being said. I will go one at a time and just ask a brief question before I pass it to my colleagues and they are free to ask whatever they please, but I just I can start with the far right with Mr. Davis. What's one reason that you feel you can be an asset to this board? Can you speak?
Sir, yeah.
Try to talk right into a queue.
Make sure it's on first.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
So. I've lived in Harrisburg all my life. I have the experience of living in a city. I I live briefly out in the suburbs for a brief period of time. I have a good relationship with people in the community. And I believe I, you know, have a good perspective of good people and just in general, so. I believe I can add value in that that way.
You also play a role in the community as a coach, correct?
Yes, I'm a I've been an assistant wrestling coach for the past. Five or six years up at Harrisburg High School, so. Like I said, I work throughout the community with children and adults, so I'm well known in the community as well, so.
Thank you for that. Mr. Miller, same question.
Yeah, I I believe that. I would be a good asset. I'm pretty good at.
You could come a little closer to my, just for those watching.
Well, I like to say that my superpower is taking what person A is trying to say and make it so that person B understands. So I really feel that's. The fundamental nature of like mediating. Yeah, that's probably what I'd bring the most as far as where I'm coming from. Veteran, I've lived in Harrisburg for a long time.
Thank you for your service.
Hey, you're welcome. Thanks for paying taxes. I was the student president at Hack, probably about a decade ago now. So like, community, especially Harrisburg area community is something that I've been passionate about for a very long time.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Ms. Carrier. Talk right into the mic, yep.
I've been, I'm from Harrisburg. I've been in Harrisburg all my life. I had the ability to travel outside. I have family that lives outside, but Harrisburg is the bulk of my life. I went to school here. I went to extended school here. I went to Harrisburg University, got a double bachelor's in biotechnology and biosciences, and then I received a master's degree also. In project management and I've been just trying to give back to my community that helped me. I believe that, you know, it takes a village. And I believe I can give back. I worked in schools, I worked PA council services, I did multiple things. I worked at things for alternative school, getting back kids back into schools that had problems. I've been in here in this community helping out for quite some time and this is nothing but an extended extension of that. I went for forensics, so I do know a little bit more about. You know, you know, how, you know, some of the services go and how they conduct services when there's a problem and there's a crime. So, you know, I I can give back to my community by, you know. Being somebody that I know they trust and I can, you know, there's communication barrier, trust barrier, and I'm I'm quite sure that I can help with that.
Thank you for that. Mr. Adrian, same question to you.
Thank you for having us here. I'm a small business owner. I've been born and raised in Harrisburg. I spent the first eighteen years of my life here and I lived in New York for four years. And I lived in Los Angeles for ten before relocating back here with my family. Currently live here on Green and MacLay. And I I've, after having lived elsewhere, I realized that like home is what you make of it. It's what the people are. It's who you bring into your life and I'm very passionate about our city. I'm trying to be more engaged civically. As a small business owner, I've always been, you know, kind of an employer sometimes here, but I've also had a lot of wonderful interactions with. Really broad range of personalities in our city. And one of the things I love about Harrisburg is how integrated it is. And how people stand up for each other. And I think my real interest in joining this started when I saw some of the tensions coming out. Honestly, like during the the Black Lives Matter movement. I saw friends on both sides of the argument kind of. Missing the point and I think a lot of a lot of. There's a lot of misguided energy, a lot of well well meaning energy, but it was all just kind of scattershot, especially through social media. And I realize there's a big PR problem. With law enforcement across the country, but maybe also here in Harrisburg. I've seen both sides of the argument. I feel like with my HR training, because I've done HR professionally at my company. And I've I've been a mediator before, so I feel like. Bringing those skills to the conversations between our people and our law enforcement agents will will help bridge that divide and hopefully. Create a calmer, nicer, more civic minded engagement across the board. That's what I hope to bring to the to the committee.
Thank you for that. Ms. Johnson, same question.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. One of the reasons I thought about, at first it was just, I was just asking like, oh, what do they do? And then somebody recruited me to come down and. One of the reasons I I've been born and raised in Harrisburg, so like when I look at Chief Carter, Chief Carter was in my grandmother's store every day. So to look at what's going on in a country and all of the racial things that we see now and how people feel about, I just feel like there's like a big misunderstanding. And I've also like, I work in the school district. I'm a school social worker. I've been there for twenty two years. So I feel like a lot of people come to me and ask me, I don't know everything, but I try to find the answers, but I think it's important to collaborate. Because some of those same families that I'm working with, they do have issues. With the police department and police officers and things like that. So I think is. I think that I can help. Try to build a better relationship because we need to understand each other. And so if I don't understand your culture or your background, or if I'm from the city and you're from the suburbs and we don't understand each other, then our views are different, but we have to work together some kind of way. So that's mainly one of the reasons why I just.
Thank you for that. And I think it's important, misunderstanding is like the key right there. I think. A lot of times, many residents may be watching this now, like, yeah, it's a board against the police. That's not. Actually, in all the reality, it's to help everyone. It's to better the city. It's to ease tensions. It's to relieve frustrations. At times where the police may need you guys or at times the residents may need you guys. It's just a way to be proactive as as opposed to reactive. I never knew that an officer who was like, you know, just walking the beat, helping out in the schools that used to purchase mixtapes would be like a colleague of mine. As I grew up, right? So that's just like a testament of, you know, there there can be great relationships. There can be, you know, positive stories that are outcomes of these. You know, circumstances from time to time. So I just from the bottom of my heart, thank you, you know, for the calls after calls and just following up and being here tonight. So I just wanted to really go into the role and function before I pass it on to my colleagues. So the core functions of CLIAC. Shall be to assist in fostering a better understanding of the role of law enforcement throughout the city, reviewing as necessary law enforcement policies. Practices and data. The goal should be to improve transparency and accessibility to public information. Provide city residents a forum to give voice to concerns about police interactions and responses to help identify critical systematic or recurring issues. Of importance for residents and businesses throughout Harrisburg and to facilitate, whenever necessary, changes in local law enforcement practices. Promote policies and practices for the protection of the local community to further the goal of fair, just and dignified treatment of each and every person. Provide recommendations as necessary to the Harrisburg Bureau of Police, the mayor and the city council on policies to maintain. Public safety for all, promote law and order, assist in the reduction of crime and protect all in the community. And finally, to foster positive relationships and improve understandings between the Harrisburg Bureau of Police and the members of the community. So it was just really important that I expanded on that a bit. And without further ado, do we still have Councilwoman Daniels on the phone? I will pass it to my immediate right, which will be Councilwoman Daniels, who's joined us via telephone tonight.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and ask the questions and I'll try to hear them both over the phone and then over YouTube. So. The question, the first question set of questions are really for. The solicitor, Mr. Grover and Chair Rodriguez, if you could just kind of. Particulate on the application process, how the selection of the applicants of of this group of fiscal hoarding applicants are made. If there are any rejections, what were the general reasons for rejections? And then for the applicants themselves, if they could. Say whether they have any potential conflicts of interest. And in that, if you could give examples of a good interaction with law enforcement and a negative interaction with law enforcement. And that's it for me.
I think it was multi-layered there, so I'll address the first portion of it. How I came to the appointments was soon as I was elected, there was an inbox full of resumes. I went through the resumes and called each and every one of them. There's no way to cut corners or really cheat that one. Called every single one and maintaining what was in the bill. Every individual has to live in a policing district that's different from the other. And instead of the, there's two that have to come at large at a later date a year from now, but that's separate. But, you know, just going through that, through the due diligence, ensuring that everyone's in different districts, everyone had, there's also criteria which a few of you, you know, exceed. But just really carefully picking it out. I also sent emails to council, Councilwoman Daniels, you should have definitely been on the receiving end of those. Just asking for any involvement throughout their way, so making the process completely transparent and involving. But there was work to get done nonetheless, and that would be my portion. Now, I think the second portion was about any. I guess, was it again, Councilwoman, like anyone that couldn't make the board, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know anyone that couldn't unless they didn't live in a policing district. There was a recent instance that came up because of course everyone. Had to get filtered through everything from social media on through. So there was a few instances where an individual. Didn't qualify through those terms, but nothing that really stands out to me.
Yeah, I will note that the lobbyist didn't vet or see the applications. They were done through the clerk's office and the council. I provide advice as to what the actual act says. In terms of what the eligibility is, having the first initial board for being seven different policing districts. There there, I don't, so I have no idea actually how many applicants there were for these positions. The I will note that there was one applicant who the offer was withdrawn from based on. In part, my recommendation, but not just mine, because it was deemed that the social media posting was antagonistic and. Hostile to the police right at the time they're looking for an appointment on the board, which seemed inconsistent with the statements of policy that Mr. Rodriguez just raised that the council. Passed in this ordinance when they did it. So there, you know, and while everyone's certainly free to have their own opinions. They are sitting as an appointee on a board advising the council and the mayor of the city of Harrisburg and coming into that an antagonistic role. Historically does not. uh, and coming into that an antagonistic role uh, historically does not seem productive.
And then the third part, um, Councilwoman for the appointees, what was it again? I'm sorry. Oh, any conflicts of interest that any, uh, the files you.
Positive experience or negative, a negative experience of interacting with law enforcement and if they could share the, if there are occasions.
I get the conflict of interest, if any of you wanted to address that first and then the negative or positive experience. Any conflict, Ms. Johnson?
No, I don't have any conflict.
Mr. Adrian? Ms. Carrier?
No conflicts.
Thank you, Ms. Carrier.
No conflicts.
No conflicts. Mr. Davis?
Uh, nah, I don't have any conflict.
Though on the record, um, no conflicts of interest from any of the pointees. And do you have a negative or positive experience you'd like to share that you've had an encounter with the police department?
Not right now, I don't.
Okay. Um, Mr. Adrian?
Um, I've had personally uh, positive interactions with law enforcement. Uh, I've been to National Night Out.
Awesome.
Which I really appreciate that they do. Um, when I've heard uh, very close gunshots, I've called dispatch and they've come and they've been really proper and appropriate.
Awesome.
Um, I'm aware of some negative interactions that are not firsthand and uh, I don't feel like it's my place to bring them up.
Right.
But it is part of the motivation of why I wanted to be on the committee.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Carrier?
Haven't had any um, inter- no interactions with police.
Speak right into the mic, please.
I haven't had any like interactions towards myself. Um, so no, I can't say that I had like bad interactions. I had one good interaction that I can mention that I was so surprised that the police handled it well. Um, my mom's neighbor, um, he's mentally ill and he was having an episode and they came and, you know, I was more worried. I'm like, oh God, those shouldn't have me and my mom run outside and you're like, we basically told him, no, he's mental, you know, you need to call somebody else. So they did and they handled it well and I was like astonished. So they did a good job.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Mr. Miller?
Um, most of my interactions, the few that have been, have been pretty ambivalent, like not good or bad. Um, for me personally, there was one time, a friend of mine that I was there for, um, had trouble getting uh, being heard by the officer, but as it filtered through the system, like the judge took it seriously and got it resolved and everything, but um, as far as me personally, yeah.
Thank you for that. Mr. Davis?
Um, I've had both positive and negative experiences with uh, law enforcement. Um, I don't really get in any trouble. I don't have anything on my record or anything like that. But just uh, moving throughout the city, there have been experiences where, you know, it's just, I think it's more so people, the people that you'll deal with and, I mean, that comes on a day-to-day basis, but um, I haven't had any, anything to have gone beyond, you know, a conversation or anything like that, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, any further questions, Councilwoman Daniels?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Majors?
Uh, excuse me. Thank you and uh, thank you all for your willingness to serve. Uh, I do see a lot of uh, familiar faces here, uh, so uh, do appreciate your willingness to, to serve in this capacity. Um, one of the, I guess just for clarification purposes, um, we have five of the seven districts covered. Um, and uh, I don't know if each of you know which district, policing district that you're in, or if we could just uh, if you, if you know, could you provide us with that or if we can have uh?
Right, they're, they're.
Yeah, well, just, I mean, we can see that, but for, you know,
For the, for the public.
For the public information, um, just wanted to make sure uh, residents know which districts are currently being represented.
Can we ask Commissioner Carter to share the districts if you're aware? There is a map on the city's website.
Right.
Um, okay.
Alright. Okay. Alright. So, so how about this? I'll do it this way. I'll do it this way. The two districts that still aren't.
I have that information for you, Wes, if you need it.
Okay. Well, no, I can, I can just note that we have five of the seven. Uh, the commissioner noted that districts five and seven still aren't filled. And those are the districts representing, uh, I, I guess, easiest way for me to put it would be sort of like the heart of Allison Hill, so uh, of Allison Hill plus south, south, south side Harrisburg, the two districts that currently aren't represented, so um.
And to plug the map, if you plug your home address in, Right. it will tell you what district, but at least district you're in.
Absolutely. Um, so for the uh, members, I know you, most of you said you've been in Harrisburg for, you know, quite a while. Could you just give me a number lifelong? I know for some of us is, you know, just give us a, a rough estimate on how long each of you have uh, lived in the city of Harrisburg.
Well, uh, I guess that would be fifty years because I was born and raised here.
Yeah, I'm so young. Um, I was here until I was eighteen and then I came back thirteen years ago.
Okay.
Been here, also in my life, um, I may have left two years. I've been here forty-six years.
I have no idea. Um, I was counting when it went too fast. Uh, it's at least a decade. Uh, I think fifteen years is how high I got.
Okay.
As, as an adult.
Thirty-five years.
Alright. Thank you. And then in terms of uh, are any of you all uh, have uh, can speak at multiple languages, any additional languages? Do we have any folks that speak Spanish? You know, we have a lot of residents within our community that speak multiple languages or different languages. Just, if there's any folks in the board that uh, interact with or can speak any additional languages.
I like to say that I won't starve in Spanish, but like if I end up in Spain, like I won't starve, but I wouldn't like have a whole conversation.
Okay. Uh, may I have additional question? Uh, Chair Rodriguez, that's it for the current time, but thank you all for your willingness to serve.
Thank you, Councilwomen Majors. Uh, President Bowers?
Thank you. Um, I just want to thank you all for your time this evening. I know the hour is late. I promise we're normally not here this long. I thought I kind of structured the agenda where we wouldn't be, but thank you for your patience and thank you for staying to answer our questions. Um, I just wanted to note the districts that are represented. So uh, Mr. Miller, you would be representing District One. Uh, Mr. Davis, you would be representing District Three. Um, Mr. Selkowitz, you would be representing District Two. Ms. Carrier, District Six, and Ms. Johnson, District Four. And again, there is an interactive map um, on the city's website. Uh, the terms are staggered. I'm not sure if you all are aware of the length of the terms that are suggested for each of you. Um, it is outlined in the resolutions, but in the initial bill, I'm sorry. The recommendation was um, Ms. Johnson for a four-year term. Mr. Davis, a four-year term. Ms. Carrier, a three-year term. Um, Mr. Miller, a two-year term and Mrs. Selkowitz for a three-year term. Just want to make sure that everybody's fine with those appointments. We know they're staggered and it takes um, I think courage and it's really admirable to be the inaugural members of anything. So just thank you very much um, for your interest in serving and I'm hopeful that um, I think all of your very backgrounds and the representation in each of your um, designated policing districts um, will bring a lot to the conversation um, and the action of the, the committee. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Vice President Green?
Thank you very much, Councilman Rodriguez. I don't have any specific questions for you, um, but I would like to say thank you. Thank you for your willingness to be here. Thank you for taking on these roles or at least volunteering to take on these roles. Um, because I know that it can be a hard position, um, especially being the first. Uh, you're setting the foundation. Um, thank you for your very backgrounds. Um, and I know this has been a long time coming. Uh, we've been working on this like for, well, it was passed in twenty-twenty, but it started before then. Um, it started the groundwork before I was even on council, um, with uh, Councilman Majors and, and Councilman Johnson, who put in a lot of legwork beforehand. Um, and then it took a long time to make sure that it wasn't a politicized process, uh, to make sure that what the goal was, was being met without making it, you know, a big political pawn. So thank you all for uh, sticking with us because I know some of you guys have been in the pipeline for a long time. Um, thank you for being here tonight and even with it being late. So I'll keep it short and I won't keep going on, but just thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Councilman Dawson?
Thank you. And I, I want to um, mirror what's just been said by uh, Vice President Green. Um, it's, it's very courageous for you to stand and, and, and be counted at this moment. Um, it's, it's great to be um, part of the inaugural class. Um, I, I just have one, one question. It's a simple question you probably have already been thinking of before you get in there. Um, for each person, how, how do you see yourselves being an honest broker in a situation between um, a citizen and the police?
Um, well, for me, I think uh, I have to look at both sides, there's two sides of each story and um, kind of, I just have to remain neutral and not only hear what they're saying, but try to understand where they're coming from.
I try to come to every conflict with an open mind and really hear and listen to what's being said and, and maybe what people are afraid to say. And I try to ask meaningful follow-up questions and I feel like through that process, you can, you can uh, help bridge the, the, the gap between uh, someone's biases or someone's misunderstanding. I think so much conflict is usually comes from a misunderstanding and it can be alleviated if you just get to the right uh, points for each, each party to acknowledge.
Um, I would like to piggyback on what they already said, um, believe
Can you speak into the mic, Ms. Carrier, please? Thank you.
I believe that communication is the key to a lot of solving a lot of problems. Um, if, if sometimes it's just easier just to stop and listen. Um, so I do believe that I have to piggyback on what they're saying. Um, being here and people that know me, um, I'm a very honest person and always, you know, start with a lot of conversations. If you don't want the answer, the honest answer, don't ask me. So a lot of the community knows that and a lot of them, they look to me for advice and they know I'm not gonna tell them nothing that it may, may not be what you might not want to hear, but it's honest.
Uh, I'd like to piggyback on what I said earlier about it. Um, like what is said and what is not said and how things that are said are said. And um, also being able to parse between what is, what is like a symptom and what's a problem uh, is, is a really important part that I that's, that's part of my superpower. You know, like this is what you're actually trying to find out, but this is your question. So I'd like to be able to hopefully use that and standardize that, make it part of the process to differentiate between what is a problem and, and, and what is a symptom of that problem. So you can find a resolution for everybody that isn't just.
Um, I believe I can look at the nuances of different situations. Um, every situation isn't the same. They say uh, you know, um, if you look at every situation, you know, if, well, if you're a hammer towards every situation, every situation is going to be a nail. So you've just got to have the ability to look at each situation with nuance, understand the position that the police are taking. You know, they, they do have a, a hard job and sometimes the intensity of it can narrow their, you know, their vision of people. I know personally, uh, when it comes to that, you know, um, but, you know, just trying to, you know, allow all sides if they want to see is a different perspective of, you know, what can possibly be in a community.
Thank you. That's, that's all that I have. I just, one, and I'm sure you already know it. This is an important job. This is something that we as a country have been needing for a while and, and I'm proud of you people for being the uh, the, the point of the spear. Um, and, and just helping to, to bring more awareness to um, just the citizens and policing and, and, and everything there. So this first step is, is a big deal. So I'm, I'm really proud of you and I'm glad that you uh, you know, showed your willingness also to, to go this with the, an open eye, open heart and, and um, you're, you're, you're doing great work for our city. So thank you.
Well said, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you. Broken record time. Fine. I know it's like, so I keep us all laughing, so we're up, but one, I just want to say um, my apologies for walking out when you all had start I'm speaking. I don't want you to think you were less important to me. My mommy duties called. Um, it was later than usual. I had to say good night. Um, I got a text that I need to say good night, so I had to call and say good night. But um, I just want to say, you know, thank you for all five of you for um, stepping up and willing to be a part of the CLIAC board. Um, like we said, it's been, it started a long time ago before many of us got on city council. Um, but you all stuck with it. Um, and it is something that we need. Um, like most of you said, it's two sides to every story and you're not on here to bash the police department, but you're on here to help and foster relationships and positive ones between the police department and our community members and continue those relationships. Um, so you know, thank you for that and I look forward to the work that you will do. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask Commissioner Carter if he wanted to say a few words this evening.
I do. Matter of fact, I can thank you for that.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to just personally. Oh.
Party, you could use this one.
No, I'm good. I just wanted to personally thank everybody for volunteering, everybody for putting their name in, everybody for having a concern for the city of Harrisburg. I too am a city resident. I'm a Harrisburg High School graduate and your grandma's beautiful. And uh, and uh, I'm just uh, looking forward to working with everybody here. And uh, you know, we'll see how, you know, things shape up and uh, um, I look for advice from you. I look for help from you and uh, you look for answers from me probably. So again, thank you and this, this is going to be interesting. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Um, is there anything further from my colleagues on council?
Just a quick uh, comment. So we'll have these five, the board initially, the board won't be able to meet until we get the other appointments, correct? Or we have a, I don't know if we have a.
Mr. Grover?
They'll have, they'll have a quorum? Okay.
Would they, um, would the board, would the quorum be able to take action um, as we await?
Or begin the process?
Appointees or begin like that?
I, I would recommend we get the other two appointees because this board, and it's something they have to start thinking about, is one, they get to nominate the next two to the council and those two have to be approved by the council. So if you're, it says at the inaugural meeting.
Right.
And since it's the inaugural meeting, it'd be better if all seven were there. There's a couple pragmatic things that have to happen in city government because government's government. Um, the meetings have to be advertised by the clerk's office under the Sunshine Act for public notice. It's a public, it's a transparent process. And that's not budgeted at the moment, so we have to figure out how to do that. And then we have to figure out if there are rooms for meetings. There's been different debates about whether they are on city property or not on city property. If they're not on city property, then there's questions about whether we have a rental or lease agreement for them to do it or just.
Do we get any of those answers since twenty-twenty? Is any, any like ideas? Because what I would hate to happen is we wait another year, waiting on two more.
I, I don't think you have to wait another year, but I think you have to have an engine to keep moving it. Mr. Rodriguez, I respectfully suggest that's you.
That's true.
That, you're, you're the engine. And uh, um, so I, I would talk with the mayor about getting the other two appointments. She did have one, but it turned out technically uh, they could not take the position. So uh, they were looking for, for still someone else in that district. Um, but I know that her office has been looking for uh, applicants.
Is there room in the bill for if there is a time where, let's say, Dick, maybe administration having a hard time? Is there any administrative power through the chair that can make those appointments?
No.
No.
You cannot take a mayoral appointment.
Okay.
Um, the, no, and I'm going to say, I, I, I'm saying it's a best practice. I don't think that we, I don't. The, no, and I'm gonna say, I I I'm saying it's a best practice. I don't think that we, I don't think it was anticipated when we built, the bill was passed, that the appointments would not be at the same time. Um, it doesn't really say what to happen if they're not all there. Um, but you, but I I would simply say, I think the timing to get the budget in place is probably enough time to also get the other appointments in place. That would be my guess.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, I'll I'll save any additional comments till the legislative session since we, it's hours late. Thanks.
Um, hearing no further questions, that would uh complete the work session for the Public Safety Department. And I um encourage to put this on the next legislative session.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
The final committee business this evening would be that of the Building and Housing Committee.
Madam President, would we need them to stick around or will this be on the?
No, they don't need to say.
You guys are free to go.
You're welcome to leave. Thank you very much. Uh, we will now move to uh the work of the Building and Housing Committee. I will defer to Chair Majors.
Thank you, President Powers. Bad and cleanup here for this first uh for our work session. Uh, before the Building and Housing Committee, we have one resolution, Resolution Twenty-Six of twenty twenty-three, a resolution ratifying a grant application and agreement of the City of Harrisburg as co-applicants with the Harrisburg Housing Authority to the Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grants Program for up to five hundred thousand for the development of a comprehensive neighborhood revitalization strategy for the South Harrisburg neighborhood and to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Harrisburg Housing Authority to carry out the purposes of the grant. Uh, of course, we have Director here, excuse me, Hill, and uh Mr. Management of Harrisburg Housing Authority. Uh, so if you would in mind, uh, find us with a brief overview of, you know, and given this is just ratifying, I'm sorry, going out. So she just gives a brief overview of where things are and how the process is going.
Sure. Um, so there uh, there has been an award made to uh Harrisburg Housing Authority in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Um, there were, the city is the co-applicant. We were one of three jurisdictions that were in the nation that were awarded. Um, it came before you initially in twenty twenty. There were three applications, two thousand thirteen, twenty twenty, and then it was awarded in twenty twenty-two. It has been um an absolutely great collaboration with HHA so far. Um, HUD will be doing a big check presentation in May, which all of you will be invited to. And um, since this is technically a different application as an administrative need, uh, ratification is needed. So it's coming before you.
No, no, I'm sorry. Like, it's, it's too late to be planned like that, right? Um, as, as Councilman Majors uh indicated, um, Sin Gorman's, for those that I haven't met formally, um, the Chief Executive Officer with the Harrisburg Housing Authority. Um, as, as Ms. Hill pointed out, um, we, we've made multiple attempts at this grant. This is a planning grant. Uh, the, the idea for this planning grant, as you see in the resolution, is to create a transformational plan for the south side of Harrisburg, in particular for Hoover Homes and Hall Manor. But it's a three-prong actually process that we focus on. One is the housing, which I just mentioned. And the other is people. So we look at supportive services and how to actually bring folks out of poverty and independence. And then the third is neighborhoods. So those areas that are actually surrounding Hall Manor and Hoover Homes, how do we? You guys kind of talked about it a little bit with the pool and those kind of things. How do we actually expand the neighborhood to make it actually a viable, vibrant neighborhood, not just Harris, not just Hall Manor, not just Hoover? So, so everything that Ms. Hill said is is spot on, but we, we, we believe that we're actually on the cusp of something very wonderful. HUD has not given this out to very many communities nationally. And for them to give it to us says that they believe in our capacity to actually do some things that only in in Pennsylvania has been really Philadelphia and Pittsburgh and nothing in between until now. So, um, so we're, we're, we're looking forward to some great things and some great reports back to this, this body. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will start with questions to my left, uh, Councilman Rodriguez.
I'm gonna um look into this and digest it a bit more. Can you come back to me?
Absolutely.
Just thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions regarding Resolution Twenty-Six?
Councilwoman Daniels?
Yes.
Any questions in regards to Resolution Twenty-Six?
Yes.
Thank you, President Powers.
I don't have any questions. Um, thank you both for your attendance this evening. I think if I remember correctly, there was, you presented on this before with another gentleman when we were um operating in a virtual environment. So I was really excited about the plans and I'm, I'm glad to hear that things are moving forward. So thank you.
All right, Vice President Green.
How'd you end up at the end? Uh, I don't have
Always at the end.
Um, I don't have any questions for you. I I look forward to to seeing the actual plan come together. So no questions here. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilman Lawson.
Thank you. Um, yeah, next time we'll call you to come in at ten o'clock and we'll get you started then. I I don't have any questions at, at this time because I see that we're, we're developing a plan, but it sounds really exciting and and I'm I'm anticipating seeing that, that plan, that plan. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here tonight. Um, I'm excited as well to see the plan. I think you all hit it on the nose with just saying that us getting this grant was a big deal, because we, a lot of places don't get it, but it goes to show how special Harrisburg is, how unique it is and how much other people, even outside of Harrisburg, sees our potential. And yes, Hoover Homes are there, but that doesn't define them. And it doesn't mean it has to look a certain way. Um, everyone deserves to have a home, uh, that is beautiful. Um, no matter what their zip code is, and I, and I think that this proves it. And I, I just can't wait to see what it turns out and how we lift our spirits. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, just real quick, um, the date that you guys are looking to do the the large announcement again, then.
Right now, we're shooting for the end of May. We're waiting for HUD to get back with us with dates for their availability.
And then it was one of three in the nation, not, okay.
Correct.
I just wanted to
I'm sorry, one of nine.
Nine, one of nine.
Third application.
The third app, okay, all right. One of nine in the nation. This was the third, our third application.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, all right. Um, but again, very exciting. We look forward to being able to work together with uh HHA uh as a partner to try and work to come up with a plan to revitalize not only that community, but other communities across the city. And this is a, a great first step for us to be able to do that. So uh, with that, I would like to add Resolution Twenty-Six of twenty twenty-three to our next legislative agenda. Uh, our next, yeah, legislative session, excuse me. Uh, and, and thank you all for sticking it out with us uh throughout the night. And I will turn it back over to President Powers.
Thank you very much. Thank you both. Uh, we will now move on to public comment. Um, just a few housekeeping notes. If you could please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. Uh, you'll have two minutes to share your comment and Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. Anyone to my right?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, um, I made a whole bunch of notes today. I've, um, my name is Pam Hour and I am I reside at one twenty-four Pine Street in the city. And um, I work for a nonprofit that is based in Harrisburg in North Front Street. I work for the Center for Independent Living of Central PA. Um, I'm here as, as both a citizen and a representative of Center for Independent Living, um, because um, I really want to see our community more represented in um, the city, um, and acknowledged. We have a great community. We, we love Harrisburg. Um, problem is access for people with disabilities. Um, there's so many issues, but it's late, uh, things that I wanted to bring up, and I won't bring them all up. But the one thing that I've noticed in all the times that I've been coming, I think I've been coming the last two months now, is I don't hear a lot of questions about access or about people with disabilities, um, the needs of people with disabilities. When you talk about housing and the opportunity for housing, questions need to come out about, okay, how many accessible units? What people might not know is people with disabilities, they come from all walks of life, but they are the most underemployed and the lowest income um, in the country of any population. And um, uh, as a modular marginalized population, we don't get acknowledged as much. Um, even in the disparity discussion last week, not one word on disability as a marginalized population. Uh, no discussion on that. Um, and I wanna see that report at some point myself to see if it's even in there. We're an afterthought. People with disabilities are an afterthought and it's unfortunate and we're tired of being an afterthought. Um, so we need to step up and get involved as well. And um, the group with the Center for Independent Living is called um Access Not Denied, because we've been denied a lot of access. Um, so they want to not be denied. Oh, sorry. So we want to get involved. We wanna be on advisories, wanna be committees. We are grateful the mayor has been working with us for the last several months. We wanna get in, involved with city council as well. And advisories like the advisory you just created, perfect for people with disabilities um to be involved in. And I'd love to see an ADA advisory modeled around what you were talking about. Um, and one last point, with those people that were represented, they were a great population. But I didn't hear anybody say they had experience with disability. And people with disabilities do have difficulty with police and interacting with police, and it's a special kind of knowledge you need to be able to be a mediator in that situation. So those are the kinds of examples that I, I will be bringing up uh, as I come, because I will be coming regularly and it's not to gripe and it's to try and give suggestions and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Hey, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Hey, seeing and hearing no one, the time is nine thirty-one PM. I would like to adjourn our um work session. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, council members, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to move right along to our special legislative session. Shouldn't take too long. Um, the time is nine thirty-one PM. I would like to call our special legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Ms., Ms. Daniels. Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present. Uh, the invocation will be led by Councilman Rodriguez, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Majors.
Um, I'd just like to take a moment of time for um, just everyone going through difficulties in the turmoil that are just the globe period, uh, bigger than the city, bigger than the nation. Um, all the prisoners of war, people that lost their life due to the war that's currently going on, but then everyone in our communities that's just facing injustice and hard times. I like to uh really take this moment of um, just quiet and low vibration to uh, not only acknowledge them, but let them know that we have, we're in their corner and support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Majors.
All right, everyone stand up, disabled too, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Councilwoman Majors. This time we will open the floor for courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone, uh, same courtesy applies? Please state your name, your address. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live. You will have two minutes to share your comments. And Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. Is there anyone to my right that would like to offer any public comments on Resolution Twenty of two thousand twenty-three? Okay, seeing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing no one, anyone to my left? Okay, we will move forward with the sole resolution for this evening. It's Resolution Twenty of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution Twenty dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution approving a proposed twenty twenty-three debt-related budget reallocation, authorizing a prepayment in accordance with the terms of the third amended and restated settlement agreement between the City of Harrisburg and Ambac Assurance Corporation and otherwise resolving the remaining forbearance liability of the City of Harrisburg arising from certain defaulted nineteen ninety-seven bond obligations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty of two thousand twenty-three?
Just a comment once again for the record, since um, everything I said before wasn't on the record. Um, for the record, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone past and present who made this moment possible uh, for the finance office, for all the hard work that you've done uh, to Councilman A Lot, former Councilman A Lot, for all the work that you did to put policies in place to make sure we get to this point, the past administrations, the current administrations, and all of my colleagues. And last but not least, the legal department with our solicitor, Mr. Grover. Uh, thank you all for all the work you've done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, Councilman Majors?
Yeah, uh, again, I just also wanna uh echo the sentiments of Vice President Green. Thank you for your work on working with the administration as their Chair of our uh Finance, uh, Western Finance Committee. Uh, thank you to everyone uh in, in the City of Harrisburg that's been dealing with this. This has been a, a long time coming for us as a community to uh get out from under these debt obligations. Um, there, there are tireless advocates, too many to name that uh have been uh, dealing with this specific issue in, in terms of all the debt that the city got itself into. Um, you know, as residents and and taxpayers, that it's a, a, a step forward for our community that we're able to get out from under this. Um, as we noted in the work session, there's still a lot of work to do to try and be able to continue to try to get to the bottom of how all of that occurred and potentially seek any potential reimbursement to the, the community. It's been a long time coming and being from the, the strong player from, you know, all the previous administrations, not just uh the Pat McAus administration, but uh, the, the Thompson administration before that, folks walked in uh to those leadership positions with a, a, a big uh chip on our, a, a, a big chip on our shoulder and a big uh monkey on the back of the City of Harrisburg. Um, sorry for that um analogy, but just, we've been holding on to, I mean, we've been dealing with hundreds of millions of dollars worth of debt obligations uh in, in this community. And this is one step, we still have uh, the other debt that we continue to pay out of CDBG, but our, our community's gonna be moving uh, in a, in a positive direction, knowing that this is off of our um, out, route under this. So just thank you to everyone here. Thank you to all the previous council members. Thank you all the previous administrations uh for all the hard work. Thank you, uh, President Powers.
Thank you. Are there any other additional comments or questions related to Resolution Twenty of two thousand and twenty-three?
Now, just uh besides saying, I'm just, I'm just to echo a bit, just proud to be a part of this team and to be walking in the steps of those that came before us and uh some monumental things. And I look forward to, you know, uh sunny skies in the City of Harrisburg in the future.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions, anything? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes, Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution 20 of 2023 passes unanimously with seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Council members, is there any old business for discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none. The time is 9:39 PM. I want entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.